And I'd like to call Thor. Today, June twenty fifth, two thousand twenty four. This is a hybrid meeting, so it's both in person and on Zoom. I first would, since it is a hybrid meeting, I do a roll call vote to see who's here. We'll do that alphabetically.
Arnold, I.
Yeah. O'Dell is not here. Reed here. Snell here.
Triola here.
Four members present. Just quickly, I'd like to go through the agenda and then move to community input, but the the agenda tonight, we're going to have community input. We're going to talk about ratifying the dispatch contract, then a vote to set this special town meeting at seven ten, seven fifteen. There'll be a public hearing on a petition from N Star for an underground service. At seven thirty, there'll be a road maintenance, public comment hearing. That will be an opportunity for anyone here who wants to talk about the road maintenance, you can make comments at that point in time. Then with eight thirty, we'll talk about the end of year transfers. Eight forty five financial policies, including employment reimbursement and credit card policy, fifty five appointments and resignations, including a discussion in the interim town clerk, nine fifteen proposed modifications to the DPW policy transfer station policy. Then nine thirty five, a TA report, warrants and liaison reports. And then we'll have a further community input at the end of our session. So I'd like to start with community input. The way we do this is we call you, you can, you have to state your name and your address. And we'll, we offer two minutes of comment time. So please keep your comments succinct and within the two minute timeframe. And I'll start with people in the room. I think Mr. Egery, you've been waiting the longest. So if you'd like to. I just want to make sure that everyone can hear. I think you're welcome to sit there or or stand. The microphone is right here, but I I would ask that when you talk, let's just make sure that people on Zoom can hear you, just their wish.
So you can actually understand what I'm saying. With my southern Jersey accent. Yes.
All right. So please introduce yourself and your street address, please.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, members of the select board. My name is Robert Egery, eighty one Wood Drive. You received my letter from last week in which I asked you to correct a certain divisive and unconstitutional town regulation. Here I wish to emphasize a couple of especially troubling aspects of the town's present policy, specifically by which the First Religious Society is acting as the arbiter, whether a private sign on the town's commons is appropriate or not. I have nothing against the First Religious Society, but they are a private religious organization that should not be in the position to allow or disallow anything that I, you, or anybody, anybody else in Coral House personally wish to display on the public commons. This is a clear violation of the First Amendment and should be corrected immediately. We're all, for Coral's private signs on public property regulation, having the select board for town manager engaging in the approval procedure of private signs is a process of discrimination by which you have been violating the establishment, the free speech and the free exercise clauses of the US of the US Constitution's First Amendment. As the US Supreme Court wrote in Kennedy versus Bremerton, School District numero twenty one, in June twenty seven, two thousand twenty two, the Constitution neither mandates nor tolerates that kind of discrimination. Last year, in a similar case of Shertler versus City of Boston, the US Supreme Court also unanimously held that Boston violated the US Constitution's First Amendment. I ask that this board to end this divisive policy and ongoing constitutional violations by repealing said regulation. Thank you for your attention.
Okay, thank you for your comments. Are there other people in the room who'd like to speak? Go ahead. Forward, please introduce yourself.
Morning, Cosgrove, T R, South Street. I'm here as a member of the Democratic Town Committee, just to bring a letter that apparently they're going to put in the mosquito regarding the Antscom private jet expansion. And they led me to believe you were going to vote on this tonight, but I guess you're not. So here's the letter anyway. Okay.
Thank you very much. Ryan. Okay.
Sure.
Please come forward and introduce yourself.
Thank you. My name's Mike Bush. I'm from two eighty Lowell Street in town. It's a pleasure to meet those of you I haven't met before. I know Barney from Lowell Street. So I I just wanted to offer a few thoughts. I wanted to second the concerns that Robert Egery raised in his letter, which he had shared with me before to the select board. I I do have equivalent concerns about the unconstitutionality of the regulation, in particular to the Constitution's First Amendment. I also have some more psychological concerns about that use of public property, which ultimately is rather inflammatory, because even if certain signs or messaging seem pleasant or nice to some people, though almost inevitably seem unpleasant or undesirable to others, and though people, of course, are free to put signs or messaging on their own private property, using public property to leave such things on there, that's where it starts getting inflammatory and unconstitutional, as the Agrees articulated in that letter. So I would urge the board to end that ongoing issue with unconstitutional regulation in the town. I don't know if this is helpful at all, but I created just a very simple motion to repeal it while still allowing people to fully exercise their constitutional rights on town property in person. If this is of any interest, I'm happy to share this if this is of any help.
Sure, if you'd like to submit it to the, we take all information that comes in.
All right.
You're welcome.
Just on a freewheeling.
Yeah, so perfect. Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Good point, Ted.
Sure.
Thanks.
All right. Yes, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Sure. Are there any other people in the audience who want to speak on anything? This is an open session for communication to the board. You can also always write letters, emails. We get those consistently online. I see there are people online. Is there anything for a public comment online before we get started with the rest of our schedule this evening? Okay, seeing none or hearing none. They're going to move on, and I think as a board, we will, we will review these comments tonight. And, you know, we'll consider, we'll consider reviewing the policy in the future. It's so desired, but we'll, we'll look into that. We know we just gone over that policy previously. Um, okay, so at seven oh five, let's talk about the dispatch contract for the Massachusetts Coalition of Police Union Local two oh one A.
Okay, that's me.
That's you, Ryan, right? Give us the update.
Yes, so the town of Carlisle and Dispatch Union, Mascop two oh one, which is confusing. So this is the dispatcher communications department, not the police. They have the same union. They tentatively agreed to the town with an agreement that we've been honoring from FY twenty one to twenty three. However, we never formalized it in a contract, so we had a tentative agreement that was legally binding, and then we we paid it. Last year, we were unable to negotiate an agreement, so we've been out of agreement for all of FY twenty four. And the union reorganized itself. We came back together, myself and the union, to discuss how we could get back into contract. And the results of that were two one-year agreements, so FY twenty four and FY twenty five. So the FY twenty four agreement was to pay, including retro, back to July first, twenty twenty three, a three percent COLA, which matches almost all town employees and the townwide COLA that was approved for that budget. So that was an agreement for FY twenty four. For FY twenty five, the agreement was a two point two five percent COLA, which was the townwide COLA during the budget process, the acceptance of Juneteenth as a, as a holiday, as a paid holiday for the dispatch, which is part of our personnel policies as well, which all other employees have, and then adding to what they call super holidays, which is public employees who have to work on holidays that are deemed of of significance. So the two that were added to the schedule this year, which matches the police contract, was July fourth and Memorial Day. So in order to move these contracts along and to get agreement on twenty four, which is about to close, and twenty five, which is about to start, the select board entertained these in executive session and then ratified the contract, and so did the communications unit. So we have what's called labor peace, and we're looking to publicly vote those contracts and give the details of those contracts to the public so that we can execute them. So it would be two MOAs, one for memorandum of agreement, one for FY twenty four, one for FY twenty five, and then amending the twenty one to twenty three agreement to get us through July first, twenty twenty five, and then we'll start negotiating the next three-year contract in the fall. Sure, I lost a lot of people, but these details are publicly available and be happy to answer any questions.
It was in our packet to ever have a chance to see. And Scott, did you have any questions on this or comments? You're good?
Uh, nope, no comments or questions.
I thought it was in keeping with everything that we had talked about, so.
Yes, they were very agreeable, and I think we were too.
Okay, you want to make a motion?
Sure. I moved to ratify the contract agreements for FY twenty four and FY twenty five between the town of Carlisle and the Massachusetts Coalition of Police Union Local two oh one A, parenthesis dispatch, and further to authorize the town administrator to sign the contract and make minor administrative changes and consultation with town council. Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, we're going to do a roll call vote.
Arnold, I. Reed, I.
Snell, I.
Triola, I.
Right, so it's four, zero, and then one extension from David O'Dell. It's not here.
A non-vote.
Yeah.
All right, moving on to the special town meeting. We discussed a date for the special town meeting. And I think we have vetted that through that we started with the moderator, went to the school, made sure the school was available. Are there any other constituencies that are people of interest that need to?
Don't go to the building.
Yeah, good.
Uh, so this is to accommodate bylaw, potential bylaw changes that are being discussed by the planning board. Uh, this gives them maximum time to have their public hearings, take public input, and make sure the public's properly informed. So this was in early October, given the windows for bylaw regulation changes, there would be very limited public debate. So this expands it, which is why it's a, it's a later date, maybe. Oh, it should be, but.
And it's after the election, so.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. That might be a thing, yeah.
Well, let me, let me make the motion. Then we can have discussions. I moved to schedule the special fall town meeting for Tuesday, November twelve, two thousand twenty four, beginning at seven.
Second.
Don't wait for somebody else.
All right.
They got here to do it. All right, so any discussion?
Okay, well, my question was actually for Barney and CPC and thinking about doing another round. Running, because now you know. And what other things that we might entertain in terms of, because we try not to do budgetary things, but CPC is a little separate, separate from. Because it's not tax, it's not attached to tax, raising taxes. Okay, I just.
Are you asking?
Yeah, I I'd like to know, what are, are there things in the works that you think are going to be coming?
I mean, I would be speaking very ad hoc, but the planning board is discussing accessory apartment bylaw and other zoning bylaws that that might be of importance and of strong public opinion. And the select board included in their goals, other bylaw changes that you would need to, you need to get going on if you're going to get it done, even for November.
Yeah, yeah, we have to set our goals first.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was in the draft, so. And the, um, the planning board bylaw you're talking about, does that include the MBTA communities? No, I'm coming. All right.
Okay, so Scott, unless you had any comments or questions. All right, we'll take a roll call vote.
Arnold, I.
Reed, I.
Snell, I.
Triola, I.
Unanimous. All right, so it's just about seven fifteen.
All right.
Usually if you let them.
One person names tend to be spammers, so just checking.
All right.
Usually they don't see this part.
Yeah. All right, shall we open it anyway? Sure, let's have, because we, we have to actually. I have to open the granted location hearing pursuant to Mass General laws, chapter one forty eight, section thirteen, thirty, petition submitted by N Star Electric Company, doing business as ever source energy to install plus or minus six feet of electrical conduit in South Street.
My second.
Second.
Thank you.
Maybe it's coming back.
Okay. Is there anyone from N Star that's on the line that was wanting to discuss this?
Well, well, this is, this is like. Yeah, all the information in our package is six feet of conduit that goes from the street inboard away from the street. Uh, it's very much like what we just did two weeks, was it two weeks ago or four weeks ago?
One week.
Uh, it's not going to disturb much, and it's for new construction there. They need to get their utilities in, right? So I see no problem with this.
And this would have the same criteria of repaving and restoring.
I don't think it fits into the pavement if it doesn't.
It's good not.
No, because it's going from the pole away from the street. Yeah, and the pole is already, it's not going across the side. Yeah, if there were anything like that, then I, you know, wanting them to post.
Yeah, you know. Yeah, but this is for five oh eight South Street.
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
Since it's supposed to be here, you need to ask if there's any others or anybody else.
Yeah. Yep. Well, I will ask, is there anyone who wants to speak on this issue? Is there anyone online who would like to speak to this? Okay, seeing none, I'm going to make a motion to close the.
You can't move.
Oh, I can move it.
I moved to close the public hearing. Second.
Okay.
Actually, did we vote to open it?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Well, I made the motion. I just don't remember voting.
Okay, so we were going to vote to close the public hearing, so let's take a roll call vote.
Arnold, I.
Reed, I.
Snell, I.
Triola, I.
Now we have closed the public hearing.
So I moved to approve the petition and plan submitted by N Star Electric Company, doing business as ever source energy for the purpose of obtaining a granted location to install approximately six plus or minus feet of conduit in South Street. Said work is necessary to upgrade the existing underground electric service to five oh eight South Street, Carlisle. Second.
Okay, is there any further comment or questions from anyone on the board? Seeing none, I'll take a roll call vote.
Arnold, I.
Reed, I.
Snell, I.
Triola, I.
All right, so. The TA, please notify them. He'll take care of that, if they pass.
It's.
Thanks.
Got it right.
All right. Cooper. All right. Well, that was much faster. We're ahead of schedule, but people may be here for the road hearing, and they have, I'm going to wait till seven thirty, so maybe we can jump to something else that's, uh.
How about the TA report?
TA report, because the TA report can.
Actually, that's Aubrey.
Yeah, she's on.
Yeah, there she is.
Aubrey, would you mind doing the TA report now until seven thirty?
Sure, yeah, yeah, no problem. All right, so hold on, I've got a baby with me right now. Let's see. All right, so, um, for this one, just some updates for town hall. We have finished the cubicle project on the second floor. It looks fantastic. Once we get some of the cabinets digitized, it'll be even cleaner up there, so it looks really great. Um, another update is we have volunteer training for the summer on August sixth. I'm going to offer two times this time, because last year we found that some folks had an easier time at night, while others would have had an easier time in daytime, so um, we will offer both, and it'll be kind of like last year, but also making sure the chairs have some more information. So this is for new volunteers and for newly appointed chairs. Um, and so we had a great outcome last year, so we're hoping for the same this one. More information will be coming out shortly. For June twenty seventh to twenty eighth, we would like to have the flags be at half mast in honor of Robert Conan, who was formerly the fire chief and, and was, you know, one of most honored citizen back in two thousand two. So that is request that we have, that I have a motion in here um, for human resources. Can you hear me? Sorry.
You can hear you just fine.
Uh, for human resources, Gretchen continues to hold the temporary town clerk position. Um, and we should have an appointment tonight, which we could talk about if you'd like, or we can wait until that agenda item.
We'll wait to the agenda item.
All right, and then we're still collecting resumes for the electrical and facilities technician position. Um, we're still working on the DPW positions. Trish McGeehan is leaving as the public health nurse. She's been fantastic. It's a six-hour-a-week position, so we're collecting resumes for that position. Um, and we're also, we'll be posting for a new dispatcher, uh, and very shortly, by the end of this week. Uh, we also have the Indian flag raising request and proclamation for you. That's in the, should be in the packet. Um, and so this year it would be Sunday, August fourth at four P M, so I have a motion for that, um, just like last year. Um, we have two remaining final financial policies to be approved, so that's also in your packet. Uh, the town hall garden continues to hold strong even since this report. I have heard that the plants are doing very well. Um, they're weeding right now this week a lot more, so it looks fantastic, and staff has really, really enjoyed being able to do that. Um, so the road repair program, Ryan can say a little more, but that was that bid opening happened today, so we should have more updates on that short shortly. Um, and then some upcoming discussion points. I am putting a memo together for town hall hours. We do need to kind of get that moving forward. Staff have been asking me about that, so that'll be a good um, decision to make in the near future. Um, and just to give some other folks, you know, for Scott and those, we've had some memos and, you know, surveyed the public and staff on what they would like. Um, and, uh, and so now it's just a matter of making a decision what that looks like. Um, and then also there's the Friends of Center Park Agreement that will be slated for the next board meeting. And then staff recognition, I'd really like to thank Gretchen Gallimore and Alana Lynch for really working hard for, to make sure the town clerk's office kept running. That was a lot of work, and there's already so much going on. Um, and it's, it's been really great, and also just how great staff has been for the last few weeks, when it's been such a shocking and difficult time, but everybody really got together and they've been helping each other as needed, so that was really um, a nice thing to come out of that. Um, and then just the upcoming dates, Brian's on vacation next week, um, and then the upcoming select board meetings in July. So that's what I have.
Okay, we have some motions relevant to this.
Yeah, and after the motions, I'd just like to add a couple things. I wasn't here, and thanks to Aubrey for putting this together, but I do have a couple of updates for the board and the public after the motions.
After the motions, I moved to authorize the town administrator to order the Carlisle flags lowered to half staff from June twenty seventh to twenty eighth in honor of Carlisle's second fire chief, Robert Conan. Second.
Okay, is there any discussion? All right, seeing none, I'll take a roll call vote.
Arnold, I.
Reed, I.
Snell, I.
Triola, I.
Okay.
I moved at the select board vote to approve the request from the India Association of Greater Boston, I A G B, to use the town common on Sunday, August fourth, at four P M for a brief ceremony and to raise the flags of India and the US to celebrate the seventy eighth Independence Day of India. Second.
Okay, I'd like to actually comment on that, because I just want to make sure that at least I have my information correct and that it's helpful to the public to understand. So we have a flag policy. Our flag policy in Carlisle was reviewed by the select board and approved by the select board several months ago. And we determined that only the American flag and military flags and POW flags, I believe, and the town of Carlisle, if it has an official flag, may fly on the town flag poles. In this case, they are instructed to bring their own flag pole, and they can raise a flag on their own. Um, and they're getting a permit to do so, and that's what this effectively is. My understanding, this, this is the, on the town common, it's being held on the town common? The town common is in common with the First Religious Society. Is that correct? How does, I just want to go over that quickly to to make sure we understand how that works.
Many decades and discussions before I came here is my understanding of the ownership of the town common is unknown, so it is decidedly split between the town and the First Religious Society. So to be clear, in all functions on that particular piece of land, the town approves, and they ask FRS to support that approval in order to make sure that that, that land is being respected.
Right, but whereas the center, the rotary is town-owned, and that has nothing to do with the First Religious Society. They have no ownership or anything or claim on that or anything.
Just the common.
Just the common. Okay, so we're talking about for this permit is just the town common, so we would have to, as you said, we'd have to get acknowledgement or permission from the First Religious Society for that.
Yeah.
Which we have.
They've already done.
We've already done that. Okay, so that was my kind of comments and questions to. Scott, do you have anything to add, or anyone else?
No, thank you for those questions, though, Travis.
Okay, I don't normally open these up to discussion, because we have comments at the beginning of our hearing and at the end. Um, I see there's a person in the audience who does want to speak. If I open it up to one, I'm going to have to open up to everyone, and we have a busy agenda tonight, so I'm sorry.
A question.
Um, well, even if I open up the questions, I'm going to have to open it up for everyone, and I just don't want to have a that tonight, but I think it is important to have these discussions about this, and so we, we have a policy. We're going to vote on this. Let's take a roll call vote.
Arnold, I.
Reed, I.
Snell, I.
Triola, I.
Okay.
I moved at the select board vote to proclaim August fifteenth, two thousand twenty four, as India Day, and encourage all residents of the town of Carlisle to join the select board in raising the flags of India and the United States at the town common that's taking place on Sunday, August fourth, two thousand twenty four. Second.
Okay. Now, we just.
Join this link and raising the flags. We've had somebody from the select board every year. I, I know I did the first one, I think.
I, I can certainly, I can certainly attend this year.
Okay, you can. Okay.
Yes.
Great, excellent.
Okay.
Okay.
So there's a motion due in a second. Okay, any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll take a roll call vote.
Arnold, I.
Reed, I.
Snell, I.
Triola, I.
All right.
So I know we have a minute, so I'll be brief.
No, you can.
We can run a minute over.
So, um, Aubrey forgot one person in this, so Aubrey was also in charge while I was gone um, to help manage the situation left in the wake of the tragic loss of Peggy Wang. So the staff had a lot of difficulty with this. We, we did the best we could to manage, manage the situation. However, everyone was extremely flexible, resilient, and got done the work that needed to get done. So Peggy would definitely have wanted us to continue on and to make sure the town hall was running correctly, and I feel the staff did that. So I'd also like to recognize Aubrey during that time and the town, and then all the town volunteers that have come in to help sit at the desk to, to make sure that nothing was missed and to make sure that the staff felt supported while, while that closure happened, and, and we worked to, to move on. Unfortunately, in government, we, we have to keep going, even when we, um, when we face something very difficult. So I appreciate all the efforts, all the people in the town who stopped by, all the. when we face something very difficult, so I appreciate all the efforts, all the people in the town who stopped by, all the well wishes and um certainly was thinking while I was gone of, of the staff, the town, Peggy and her family. For business, as Peggy would say, let's keep going, um just wanted to talk briefly about the official flag as you mentioned, so this is in the works, we are sewing like Betsy Ross, the Carlisle flag. Um, it will be presented at the state house, which makes it official, and then we'll display it here. So it is essentially is just a, a basic flag with the town seal, but it is, it is the official flag. Uh, Scott Evans is heavily involved, as are many other volunteers in town. So when that becomes available, I will invite the select board, because we'll be going to the state house with um, with our, our local delegation. For procurement, just to add a little bit of extra to that, since I've been back, the uh, we do have the bids for the road repair program, they came in well under bid, which is something I never get to say.
Wow.
So either we overestimate it, we're making ourselves look good, or uh the costs were actually estimated correctly, and I do believe it was the latter. So you'll see the results of this in the road repair program, but we basically gained another half a year to a year in our plan.
Excellent.
And we'll be able to award that this week. For the Westford Street culvert, that's coming in uh next week as well, which will allow us, I'm sorry, in two weeks by the ninth to uh repair the culvert, so more work was done. Just so everybody knows, we had to borrow a plate uh from Chelmsford, they were nice enough to let us borrow a plate and then we we uh put it in the ground and sealed it over so that, that it was safe. And then uh we have now rented one that is bigger, and that's why the bump is a little bit larger there, but it's needed for stability, so as soon as that's authorized, we have to go to the conservation commission, get a thirty day waiver and then install the temporary culvert. Uh, the good news is the design and the cost of the culvert are lower than we estimated, I never get to say these things, so that's one. Uh, but we'll see when the bids come in what the actual price is, and then hopefully we can have that done by uh first week or second week in August. Uh, depending on, depending on how things go. So those are a couple important updates, also the police station will be coming to you, uh we will be reviewing a procurement for an O P M to help guide through that process. Currently, the police station is uh with the zoning board of appeals and the historical commission for, for some final permitting. I am asking the select board to pay close attention to those, those proceedings. Um, with summer months and hours, it's important that, that the, the town and boards come together to have a couple additional meetings to make sure we don't get well into the fall with the approval of the police station, so I, I think it's doable. Just giving you a heads up that those conversations are coming, uh we need the final permitting so that when we bid, the contractors don't add costs to their bid, knowing that they have to go through maybe some potential changes, so if we can lock up all of the design, then we'll get an exact price and then hopefully not go back to the, the taxpayers for more money. And that is it, thank you again to Aubrey for handling the report, it was nice to have her do it.
Alright, I'd like to move on then to the road maintenance public comment hearing. Um, and just to start with some background, and we started this process actually uh a year ago, we heard in December, uh, we, we received the initial report that was done by consultants about the entirety of the road system in Carlisle, so we have catalogued all of the roads in Carlisle and um it's really what the select board has wanted to do and really Ryan has been instrumental in doing this, is coming up with a, a process and a plan for public comment on the roadways in Carlisle, because to date I think it's been somewhat ad hoc and people just, you know, fixing them as needed. And we felt that this was better to have a plan in place where we have um the public provide input and then we can obviously, there's a political process in that, like I want my road done first or whatever that may be, but but that at least gives us input as to how the public is thinking about it, and we ultimately will decide a plan for the roadway improvements, there has been some budgetary things that have come out of this um in that we are gonna have to spend more, if we want to maintain the roadway system in the condition that it's currently in, we're gonna have to spend more out of our budget than we currently are spending, because it has been deteriorating over time and just so we're gonna have to evaluate that and decide as a board. Um, and so we obviously encourage all public input in helping make that decision, so with that, um, Ryan, did you want us to start with just public comments, or do you want to give any type of presentation first, and what would be best?
I, I think it would be helpful for just a couple minutes, I do need a couple minutes. So I would like to take you through uh what has been done, what is projected to be done and what the financial impact is of that, and then I have about thirty responses from the public. And then I know that there's some people here, so I would suggest people here and then I can go through my dryer, but still important document. So the report that uh our chair just mentioned is the pavement management plan. So the high, high level summary of this is Carlisle roads are about a C plus, C plus being pretty common in New England. I just drove in El Paso, those roads are great, but they don't have any snow, right, so their, their roads last twenty years, ours last five, ten. Uh, so the pavement management plan identified and uh quantified the quality of road. So our roads range from somewhere in the forties out of a hundred scale to somewhere in the mid nineties, the mid nineties being the ones that were just recently repaired and are in the best shape, so the average in Carlisle is in the mid seventies. Uh, and that's what this pavement management plan does, this is online and available. It also offers a, a couple year paving plan that we follow pretty closely. I've also attached a rating to all of the roads comments that came in, so the board can see that, and I want the uh public to know that those ratings come from this pavement management plan, which is designed by engineers and not me and not Jim and not someone from the public. So in terms of what we are currently, what I was talking about earlier, we procured uh the twenty four and twenty five plan, two years, which I think helped lower some of the costs and commit a vendor to, to our process, so the segments of road in the two year plan include, I should share this, I'm sorry, to the people online. Second, sorry. Alright, here we go, everyone can see it now, so Westford Road, uh is an emergency culvert replacement, we don't have a lot of control over. And then uh the paving projects include, this is a, a mill and fill, so a strip down and then uh a filling in of all of the damaged areas and then a cover, a cover and coat. So that includes Church Street, Curve Street, Proctor Street, Prospect Street, uh River and School. And then a minor, a minor bit of crack ceiling, which is preventative maintenance, which prevents us from having to mill and fill all roads um for, for longer. And then the twenty five maintenance plan includes a lot more crack ceiling, plus Baldwin, Pattern, Roger, Sterns, both segments, West and Woodbridge. Okay, so um, at least twenty twenty four, which is two thousand twenty four, but F Y twenty five has been approved and now we are likely to start that project in August. So what does that mean? That means how do we fund it, which is important, so over here on the left you have current funding, so this is essentially what we have in the bank, this is state dollars, eight hundred and twenty five thousand in F Y twenty five, so after July first, we will get another two hundred and fifty two thousand, that's our normal allotment, and then the state passed something called the Fair Share Act, which will give us another hundred and fifty four thousand. There was a rural road program that was passed by the state that's included in this July one total. So the total assets available without touching any other uh dollars, this is just state funding is, is one point two million. So if you take the, the plan I just outlined, again, I'm moving really fast and, and can answer any questions. The culvert, uh oh, so this, this also includes the engineering for the emergency culvert, so the the re- repair will be about a hundred thousand dollars for that culvert, a lot lower than we thought, as I mentioned. Uh, but we'll have to repair it again in the future, because it's only a temporary fix. And then the F Y twenty five paving, we're estimating at about three hundred and seventy five per year for the next two years for a total use uh through F Y twenty six of the approved plan of eight hundred and fifty, which if you add what we know, which is we'll get some chapter ninety money from the state, leaves us a, a balance of around six hundred and thirty two thousand. So if you project that over ten years, so all this does is it takes the balance of the previous year as what we know for revenue or is what is likely for revenue, projects a cost and then gives us a total, you'll see out in the thirty, thirty one, thirty two and, and definitely thirty four, the negatives start to pile up, which means if we were to keep our roads at C plus roads, uh, it would take a five hundred thousand dollar investment and we would still not have enough money to cover being C plus.
Just assume the revenue of the two fifty is constant, that would likely go up when
It hasn't gone up in the last decade, so we're, we're not sure it'll go up in the next, so um, a lot of the state advocacy we have says that uh, there's a two hundred million dollar bond bill that's the state approves for, we've been asking for three hundred and to three hundred and fifty, which would do what you're saying, which is double that two fifty to five hundred and allow people to keep around a C plus road. Whether they do that or not, or whether inflation o- uppaces this is, is highly likely, so uh what this tells me is to keep the roads the way we are now, we need to start putting capital money into the capital plan in order to keep up with just the roads we have, never mind the repairs we need, so um, not the best story, but we do have the ability to fund the next three to five years uh pretty comfortably. Won't make everybody happy, but there'll be a, a capital plan in place. So I also have I also have all of the not, the non-in-person comments, so we can jump to in-person and then I have a lot of data for the the non-in-law, in-person and then the in-person, I can add data to it if you want, so we can go anywhere.
Great, well, I think we will open it up to the public if anyone wants to speak, and so I'd again ask you to come forward. You, if, if microphone should pick you up, but just address the board, give us your name and your street address and then, you know, if you would limit your comment to one or two minutes, I mean, it wouldn't be too long generally. Um, and then we'll go online, but when I start in the room here and then I'll move online. So is there anyone who wants to speak? Please feel free, if you have a comment. Go ahead.
Oh, that was the last one, you don't, for you, you want me to move on?
Why don't you move on, just so it'll be easier for the people on the Zoom to hear you.
Hi, I'm Mike Owens, I live on Peasant Hill Lane, one thirty two. I forwarded to Ryan an email yesterday with an update, you're, you're not even, I guess some, you were in some of that update. So I'm gonna be briefer today than, than what's in that, but feeling, got questions, I'm happy to go into details and just some notes to keep me on track so I don't babble on. Uh, first I'd like to thank the select board, Ryan, I don't know if Jim Hall's on the line, but to, to get our input feedback and grievances is, is just great. Thank you, thank, thanks for that, so let me, uh, I'm gonna quickly cover two issues. Um, well, again, which I forward to them, but I haven't given a detail, so the first issue was relevant to the dozen or so of us that live on the dead end street, uh, on Peasant, Peasant Hill Lane. Um, but the most important one to me, uh specific was the second one, I'll co- I'll cover second, but let me start with some good news. In the late summer of two thousand twenty one, we found out that our road was finally gonna get paid, the state funded the road. Um, we were told and the work began shortly thereafter, DPW coming in in the fall, digging up about dozen, fifteen boulders that started protruding the old road as it, as it eroded away, and then in the spring of that year, outside contractor came in, laid down the, on the buzzword, right, um, the base coat, which is called the asphalt something or other, the asphalt binder base coat. Um, and we were told that it was decided that um they were gonna split the cost across two fiscal years. We'll be back in August to put the top coat down. That never happened, um, to laying down the top coat. Now, uh, how, some short term issues with that is part of the road specifically around the circle was thinly graded for drainage, in anticipation of the top coat finishing off, that's, you can see that all of a sudden that's gonna need the recurring. We're backing up a bit, the reason we're very happy to get this for, for many years, after every snowstorm, DPW would come out, repatch what they just patched the previous storm and they tell us this is the worst road in Carlisle, so we were happy for all this other stuff. You can see in the circle that pretty soon that area is gonna need some repatching, because it's just too darn thin. But moving on to my specific issue, I am, uh, my house is right on the circle, you see it, that street, and it's very close to the circle. And the circle is, is sloped and the land around the circle is sloped, that all the runoff comes right at my house. The builder of the house uh put a, a little patch solution and basically dug a V ditch down the, oh, but let me also back up. My house is built into a forty five degree slope. I have a nineteen foot ceiling in the basement to give you perspective of the slope. And the house is very close to the road and the slope begins at my front door. So, oh, oh, so the, the, the little gully he built and put some rocks in, over time, nature, the silt from the runoff, that's completely clogged and things have now moved into my driveway and water finds the path of least resistance. I dig a little thing here, it goes there, I've had to hire landscape, because now the slope holding up my house gets these little micro erosions as the water comes. I was supposed to, I was, had commitments from DPW, from um Gary Davis at the time, um and even, even uh the, the uh Timothy Goddard had forwarded me an email saying you had to talk to Gary and hey, he's gonna go fix that when they fix the road, so I was told in the spring, don't worry, everything we told you we're gonna do, we're gonna do, we do the top coat. So we got no top coat and I'm still fighting this dilute.
Okay, Mr. Owens, thank you, that's helpful for us, you know, this is what we want, is they'll look to tell us what roads are not in good shape and why and
Oh, only the last question, is there any follow-up I should expect or?
That's a good question, I don't know how, out of this, um, I think we're gonna come up with a plan, we're gonna ultimately have which roads get done. But as to your specific thing, I can't, I can't assure you, I, I don't know, we haven't set our plan yet.
And what I don't know, if you can find out the fact that there's no top coat, does that mean the base coat's gonna need servicing much sooner? Does it pay me out or pay me a lot more later?
Great, thank you, alright. Um, are there any others in the room who wanna make a comment? I'll move online then, after, if there are none. Seeing none, um, so Mr. Yep, Andrew Yep?
Yes, hello, I'm Andrew Yep, um, I've been, we've lived in Carlisle since two thousand nine, um, we're currently at oh, sorry, yeah, we're currently, I was getting to that, sorry, we're currently at Berry Corner Road, one oh five Berry Corner Road. Um, we moved there in twenty seventeen. Um, and the section of road that leads to our house, we're, we're the last house on Berry Corner Road. That section's been deteriorating every year that we've been in there, um, sort of every winter when it goes through the freeze thaw cycle, it gets worse, also at this point the plows are tending to rip up additional chunks of it. Uh, that's not, I'm not faulting the plows for that, I think it's just the nature of the amount of um sort of potholes that are in it at this point. Um, I had sent some comments and a photo to Ryan uh last night, um, so I'll try not to rehash that too much, but I did go out and uh measure it with a laser level as well to try and get a sense of some of the variance, and it's as bad as sort of five and a half inches in that worst section, and our, our car with the least ground clearance only has about five inches of clearance, so I really have to kind of thread a path through there with that car to avoid scraping it. Um, you know, I know it, it's a dead end, it only goes to our house, but it, it's worse than any through street I've driven on in Carlisle and you know, I would imagine if it were through street, it would be extremely high priority, because it's kind of not, it's, you know, kind of impass, getting impassable for some cars. Um, I also, I think uh Gary Davis, I believe was the previous um head of DPW, I, I had talked to him about it. I think he'd indicated that, yeah, he thought it was in need of hot topping, I think was his term, I'm not sure if that's the same as Mill and Phil, but I think he'd indicated that, yeah, he thought it was in need of that soon. Um, you know, it also needs those, D, D, P W has come out and patched those potholes a few times and kind of just needed to redo them every spring. So there's an ongoing cost with it being the way it is, um, yeah, and so it's just, you can see that's that section that curves and then ends that I'm referring to that you've got up on the screen. Um, so yeah, I just wanted to advocate for that section, the rest of Berry Corner Road is in, is in better condition, it just happens to be this section that's wearing poorly and, you know, I'm afraid that we'll get sort of forgotten forever as going to a single house. You know, I know it doesn't serve as many houses as others, but it is a, it is town road, and so I do hope it, you know, can get into the queue for repair sooner than later, maybe as part of some nearby streets being worked on.
Great, thank you for your comments.
Yeah, thank you.
Or, so uh we'll continue on?
Sorry, just quickly, um, this is the rating scale that you saw before. So zero to fifty five is, is the worst in town with ninety three to a hundred being do nothing roads. Um, Berry Corner is fifty four, just to put it in context.
So it is one of the poorest roads rated, was that, yeah, we can you take a moment and put up the map of Carlisle that you have, that all the different, is that, I thought that might be helpful for some to see, we, as part of this report, there was a map of Carlisle that highlights each road in Carlisle with different colors and so you can see red being the most severe and um
I'll get to it in a second, sorry.
That's okay, I just think it would be helpful, because there's a lot of people from the public who are interested in this, rightfully so, we're, we're looking for All right, Ryan, put you on the spot here.
It's actually really worth reading in the board. There's a lot of information in it and I learned a lot about.
More about paving than you ever thought you had. Uh, he's actually flipping through the entire reporter here, so we'll. Speed read it.
Uh, he's in the front, but it's not.
Okay, so I don't know if online or they can they see it online.
And you can see the little part of Berry Corner there.
I, we can't see it online currently. Oh, thank you.
Putting it up. We're putting it up. So this, this is a map of, it's said Carlisle. And this is what the engineers did. They surveyed each road in Carlisle. They went through and they raided every road. Ryan, do you wanna give any more detail on that or?
Uh, the the report indicated that the the main roads in Carlisle are in decent shape. I'm using. Non-professional language here and the local roads or the roads that are are feeding the the communities are in the worst shape, which is pretty common in New England. I'm not justifying it. But the the attention goes to the highly traveled roads when you have limited resources and the local roads are. Many of them you'll see here in red, which are the the worst conditioned roads.
Nice period. All right. Well, you can see a number of them are dead ends, you know, where there are low, low traffic roads and so, yeah, um, so that. So I think that what we're trying to do is is come up with a plan to prioritize how the town wants to spend its money. As far as fixing roads and which order those get fixed. So obviously, this is a highly political process, but you know, we get input and this is what we're doing. So, um, I think we can move on to the next, but that that's a helpful diagram. And yeah, please, if you're in the public, please take a look at the report because it's helpful. Just information. Um, I see Meredith Daly. You'd like, uh, we can't hear you. You're gonna have to unmute. And if you would introduce yourself and your street address, please.
Yeah, hi, everyone. Uh, Meredith Daly, three ninety-four East Riding Drive. Appreciate the opportunity to to speak today. Um, I'd like to propose support for road maintenance at the corner of East Riding Drive. And where it meets up with Brook Street. Um, sort of at the the entry of East Riding Drive, um. And kind of on the corners there, there's, there's two pretty deep recesses. Um, on each side of the road that are pretty consistently filled with water. Um, and you know, even after we're seeing periods of extended dry weather, we are still seeing water there. Um, during the wettest of seasons, water uh, tends to stretch all across the road there, right where um, you're entering in from Brook Street. Um, and sort of with the the freezing and thawing cycle over the past uh, winter that we had, it seemed like these. Um, ditches kind of uh, deteriorated even further. So, you know, if you're uh, a driver that's not super familiar with the area. Um, you may not be aware of how deep these holes are. Um, they just look like a shallow puddle, um, especially if you're, you know, it hasn't rained recently. Um, but we see that cars, myself even yesterday, uh, bottomed out in this area. Um, and it can also pose a danger to pedestrians too, um, as they're sort of forced into the middle of the road to avoid. Water on both sides. Um, the oncoming traffic, a bulk on Brook Street and East Riding, um, as it's coming around the curves. Tends to come in pretty quickly and so pedestrians don't always have. Uh, you know, sufficient time to kind of get out of the way as they're also dodging the water. So. The impact is significant both to drivers and pedestrians. So um, putting in my my support for. Um, some additional maintenance kind of right there at the corner um, of those uh, of East Riding um, in Brook Street. Thank you.
Just so you know, if you're not in the room, um, our town administrator is taking copious notes on each of these. So, so we, you're you're being recorded and and the letters that came in will go through the emails too or talk about some of those. But um, all right, uh, next Christina.
Hi. Oopsie. Hi, um, thanks. I, oh, Chris, Chris, so Opelousas Hemlock Hill uh, Road. Um, I actually would uh, like to um. Suggest Elizabeth Ridge Road, um, coming off of Lowell Street on the way to the transfer station. Um, seems like no matter how slowly I make that turn, my recycling goes flying all over the car. And I think that um, addressing uh, that especially the the lower section uh, of um. Elizabeth Ridge Road could be beneficial for a big majority of the town, um, going to the transfer station. So I'm sure I'm not the only person. Has issue with uh, flying, flying waste, trying to get to the trans transfer station. So, thanks.
Okay, thank you. Um, is that Eric Bale? All right.
Oh, no. Uh, heck, hi, it's actually Kathy Palace talking.
Yeah, hi Kathy.
Hi, how are you? Uh, I have. Uh, a few questions. I'm, I don't think I'm muted, am I?
No, we can hear you. Just wanna know your street address, please.
Uh, one O five Noel Farm Road.
Okay.
And uh, the report that had the streets graded by color, where can that be found?
So if you go to the town administrators page.
Yes.
On the left navigation, you'll see reports and all of the long term strategic ports are there, including the road maintenance plan.
Oh, okay, great. Uh, so.
So I can't email it to you.
No, no, I I can navigate websites. Uh, for the Noel Farm uh, Road neighborhood, I. I can see at least that Garnet Rock, which is severely in need of maintenance. Was graded red, which it definitely needs. The entire. Neighborhood is in pretty rough shape. I wouldn't have asked for any repaving until the um, development on Birch Lane was completed. Which it now is. Do we ever um. Ask for additional funding for repaving when a developer is done with. Their developments because the trucks going in and out, I feel. Had a a deleterious effect on the paving in the neighborhood.
The town administrator answered that too, but I think the planning board puts conditions on the uh, and approvals on their plans. And that they are requiring those contractors to fix any damages. Is that your understanding too?
They shouldn't be given.
Yeah, that that should be occurring and I believe it is on the planning board. I don't know if the follow through has been. Um, and so if there are cases of that, you should please reach out to the planning board or we can.
I mean, I don't know how you would like pin a particular. Degradation of the road surface to the trucks necessarily. I just feel like. It wouldn't have made sense to repave before all the trucks going in and out. Um, and one thing in addition, at the end of Suffolk Lane in the cul-de-sac. There is a hole. It's been patched a couple of times already, but the hole is. Deep enough that my husband could put his leg in like to the top of his thigh. Um.
Like a pretty su- severe.
It's a pretty severe hole. Um. I feel like there's maybe some uh. Uh, underground water or something is washing it away, but I feel like the neighborhood. Needs some looking at overall. I, there's not been any, you know, significant repaving since we moved in in nineteen ninety-three. So.
Noel Farm, no, Suffolk, Suffolk, yeah, it's a dead end.
I think it's part of the whole neighborhood, but um.
Okay, it's not as a public. Yeah, wait, I mean, it's the first street on the right.
The first street on the right, yeah.
Okay. Okay, anything else?
Um, I think that's it. I want to know where the report was, want to report the hole and yes, to maybe get some funds from the developer. To possibly aid in the repaving. Of the neighborhood, given the wear and tear on the roads from the trucks going back and forth now that the development is complete. So that's my my debt. All right, thanks.
Thanks Kathy.
Kathy, can you see the the bird's eye view here with the. Hopious trees. Carlisle's very beautiful, by the way. A lot of trees. Do you know where the pothole is? So the cul-de-sac's up here and Nor- Norl Farms down here. You tell me about where.
It's 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 in the cul-de-sac. I wanna say uh, the um, like seven o'clock position. In the public area of the cul-de-sac.
So right here.
Um, I don't know if I, can I see?
You can't see your person.
Oh, okay.
In the shadow of the.
Got it. All right, seven o'clock when the cul-de-sac. Thank you.
Yeah, so.
Okay, thank you very much. Um. Online, I I don't see if there are any other hands. Doesn't look like any other hands are raised. Um. But this is helpful. Why don't we, can we go into, we we received written comments too, I think thirty plus.
We did.
I heard about some of the people. I can't go anywhere except my comments.
Take all communication if you wanna. passenger vision.
I will walk you through some and um, you saw it could bring you to the roads and show you where they're in context. I do wanna show you.
I I'm, I was just gonna ask if you were sharing that.
I will, one second. A lot of tools here.
You're doing a good job actually navigating multiple. Here.
Okay, um.
Can people online see that image online? Anyone or is Scott still on?
Yeah, he is here.
Okay, yes.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so this is Carlisle. The. People can't see my hand motion, so I'm gonna try and verbally navigate. The green is the paving program for this summer twenty twenty-four.
It mean.
The green, the very bright green light.
Six lines.
Okay, the uh, blue is twenty twenty-five paving. And then the uh, complaints as of Monday. We had a lot today and we've had more tonight are dotted uh, that I'm discussing here. So we will continue to try and map out people's complaints. Uh, the DPW has five times more complaints than I do. So we're gathering that data. Um, at. It was manually taken or verbally taken and we're gonna start logging it to make sure that we can see these. So you can see the trouble spot areas, but one thing, just looking quickly at the data you can see is most of it is local roads.
Yeah.
So that confirms. That confirms the report and what we saw.
Tell us what the significance of the colors of the dots are.
Different years, so I'll get to that. It's from last year or this year. I've been gathering data for a while.
Oh, right.
So I will jump to. I'm just gonna go through some of these and and stop me if you want to, or we can go to the map or we can, we can do whatever you want. So one of the comments that we got and some of these are multiple comments. I just tried to make it more succinct is to paint lines on major roads to improve driver safety. So uh, the DPW does is on a plan now to alternate years, painting white lines and then yellow lines. So last year we did white. Uh, the yellow this year, we're gonna do some white lines. Any new roads are are automatically included in that for both white and and yellow. The reason we do that is to save money and cost. And um. Make sure we're being efficient with it. So for so the board of the public knows we have about ten thousand dollars a year to do painting and we spend every cent. To do as much painting as we can. Okay.
We did it in the fall.
Last fall, yeah, and we'll do it again in late summer. And that that'll be the alternative, yellow, white, yellow, white. So um, white lines are significantly less expensive than yellow, something I learned. Don't know why.
Probably the landing, personally, usually dash, so there's less paint and they're not double like the solid double yellow line, so I'm imagining.
So the um, there is a complaint of a sunken catch basin on Conker Street by Buttrick Pond, a couple complaints about this. And anything in bold and dark is something that Jim and I discussed this week. So this is as current as we can get. The DPW will fix this one by the end of August twenty twenty-four. It is a significant fix and has been a problem for for as long as Jim can remember. So when I mean problem, I don't mean we knew it was a hole and we just stared at it. It's something that's been patched or attempted to be fixed and it hasn't held. Much of the cold patching and patching work that's done in New England doesn't. It's it's a, it's a common problem. Um, it doesn't mean we're not trying to get better at it, but it is a cost benefit analysis. So a lot of the time it's patched just to keep it good for the summer. And then in the winter it gets destroyed again. Next comment was addressed potholes and damage on Nathan Lane between the Catch Basins and Virginia Farm. This is uh, something I drove myself. We've had a few complaints in this area. So Nathan Lane is a PCI. That's the score rating of sixty-eight, which is deficient. Um, not not as bad as as it could be, but definitely one of the, one of the worst town roads in town. Uh, it is not on any long term plan right now. Topic Road is. On the consultant plan for twenty twenty-seven. It is not on the two year plan. Topic Road is a forty-two on the PCI scale. The sinking storm sewer drain basin on East Riding. I think we just heard a comment about that. It sounded familiar to me. This will be again fi- fixed by the end of August. So why not? Why not July? We are uh, a little short staffed in July and focused on raising the basins for all the paving projects that we have. That's gonna be the primary focus of non routine maintenance to include roadside mowing and other stuff that we have to do in July. So a lot of the the road repair will be in August, including the paving.
And are you sure that that's? That's the basin they're talking about is the one at the at the corner of, um.
East Riding and.
East Riding and Brook, because there's another basin that doesn't drain and there's always water uh, across the street and I think it's one sixty-five.
Good to know. Thank you.
I I sent you the.
Sure you have. Okay, uh, Woodridge Road, a few, a few comments on Woodridge. So they, a storm drain. This is scheduled for paving in twenty twenty-five and all of the storm drains, unless they're emergency, will be repaired to include the culvert. Uh, right before the paving. So this is for cost efficiency for. Um, just for for maximum efficiency. So it'll be part of the twenty twenty-five. Any road we pave, we address the culverts and the drains on it. Unless there are emergencies and they need to be fixed, they they wait until the. The paving projects starts. So we do that about a month before the start, just to make sure that it's dead on with the paving. The Woodridge Road is a sixty-five on the PCI scale and it is scheduled for paving next year, as I just mentioned, twenty twenty-five.
Is that a likely road? No, it is not. Uh, Baldwin, yeah, I just all the way around, but I was thinking the end. Baldwin continues straight and I don't know if it becomes Stern Street, but there's, it's a, it ends wood. Woodbridge goes around that, I think, right? It's in the. And I'm, the reason I'm asking is that I think if I'm in the right area on the map, the the, there's a cul-de-sac at the end. Of that road, which may be Stern Street, which is, you know, I've walked with my dog. He's in really rough shape. It's right there. See, you have Sterns, but I don't know if Sterns, because that's Woodridge, but I don't know if that's Baldwin, then it just keeps going straight.
Uh, it is.
That last cul-de-sac there, that area after the, at the bottom of the page that. So that that's a little particular option. Sorry, I don't mean to take a.
No.
No, no, but it's. Right, yeah, yeah. Okay, I know what you're talking about now.
Assuming that this is jumping around with me. We have a couple on hands too. I don't know what you wanna do with that.
Um, why don't you get through your list there and then we'll take the. At least on this page.
I'll speed up a little bit and then we.
Yeah, yeah, and then we'll take some more questions.
Baldwin Road, which you just mentioned, is a forty-three. So it is one of the very worst roads in town. It is on the twenty twenty-five paving plan along with Woodridge. When we do paving projects, we tend to to pattern them together in order to save money.
It's Baldwin is what I would call collector road.
Or, yeah, you know, it does. It connects to to School Street, all to Stern Street and then see if it could get around.
All right, a couple interesting things from East Street. East Street was, a section of it was paved in twenty twenty-three, as you remember. The section from Blaisdell to Rutland, which is a seventy-seven on the PCI, is not on any paving plan, but it has been requested for repair. The culvert at seven seventy-eight East Street is a significant culvert that has the same complexity as Westford Road. So we, we do not have the ability in-house to fix that and it is in our. One to two year plan to come up with. So we had Westford. And Westford Road and we had uh, this culvert assessed by our engineers to try and get a grant and Westford went before we could even start the engineering process. We do not expect the same for for East Street, but we do need to design it. And it's, it's gonna be pretty expensive. So this is gonna be a capital plan item, not a chapter ninety item in um, in all. And what we can see, okay. Also, around town. Uh, Carlisle has these, I'm guessing, were once beautiful granite posts with cable guardrails and many of them are in. Yeah, dis- disrepair. What did I say? Uh, granite posts, this is a townwide problem and we don't, this is something that we have to discuss as select board finance committee. Uh, it would be very, very expensive to fix all these, they're all in pretty much the same state of disrepair. What are we gonna do with them and how do we want to address that is a, is a horizontal construction problem, a long term capital problem.
And I assume it's a safety issue, no, I mean, because otherwise, why would we have put them to begin with, it's usually on curves. You know, big drop off. They were original guardrails, but now we have more standardized guardrails that are compliant. Yeah, well, I mean, and I know my street has, um, you know, like wooden, wooden ones. Free, you know, like telephone poles, is there all routed out now, so. Yeah, so that, that is something that we need to look at down the line, alright.
And then the northbound lane of Conker Street at Butchick Pond, uh, this is where there's also a cover problem. That's a PCI seventy three, which is in the preventative maintenance category and it's, it's not on any long term paving plan. And I, I will send this to the board and this will be part of capital planning as well.
Can we, you wanna keep going or should we do?
Well, that was the end of twenty three, right?
Uh, Eric and Kathy Bales, I, I see if you have a, a quick question or a quick comment, we're gonna try and keep on track here.
Oh, okay, it was just, you mentioned something about painting, uh, lines on the roads. And I was wondering if there was any plan to paint a white line around the cobblestones and the rotary. To indicate that you really aren't supposed to drive on the cobblestones, I think that was the original intent, unless you absolutely had to.
It's a good point, because I think what happens also is that people send it, enter the, um, the rotary a bit. But especially from Lowell Road, they don't, uh, stop soon enough and so some people have to almost swerve off into the cobbles. Okay.
We, we serve at your pleasure.
Thank you for that comment, um, was there any?
Yeah, thank you, I just had a quick follow up after managing to download and skim the report, um, since it was mentioned. I, I saw that the paving plan goes out through twenty thirty and, and without Berry Corner on there. And I see that healed is on there for twenty twenty six, which is healed is off of. I mean, I just, I just don't see how, you know, my road is ever gonna get prioritized with that rubric and I think I would just advocate for trying to. Consider tackling some of these, the worst sections of these dead end roads when paving is happening nearby. Because I would assume that's more cost effective, I mean, we're talking about literally ten feet of road that is the offending section and, you know, I would just. Yeah, again, wishing that perhaps that could be part of the healed project in twenty twenty six, thank you.
Okay, so one point of clarity, the approved plans for paving are for twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five, the consultant report does go out to twenty thirty. But that's not approved, that's just recommended from the consultant in order to meet our financing plan. This data is meant to help us create a five year paving plan and eventually a ten year paving plan. So we're gathering data post twenty twenty five paving for the longer term plan. So it's not, you can't say it's not on the plan yet, but, uh, so far it hasn't been recommended until, until you recommend it.
Thank you for clarifying.
Okay, any other questions here in the audience? Okay, seeing none, go, keep going, Ryan, this is good, we're moving through it.
Alrights. Curb Street, um, good news for, so Curb Street is on the twenty twenty four plan, it was an alternate, because we weren't sure if it would fit into the financing plan. And as I said, everything came in, including the third street under, under what we anticipated, so we'll also address the culvert near Hutchins Road. Uh, the curb street section we're paving is a PCI fifty two as part of this year's paving.
Okay, so it's not all curb street, because part of curb street was just recently done.
Uh, Pagebrook Road, which we heard about tonight, is, um, a PCI sixty three and it is not on any current, current, on the two year paving plan.
Well, it just got paved, but they didn't fix those, like that corner when they get it.
Katie, um, we heard about this night, intersection of East Riding and Brook Street. And, um, this one, so a note that I didn't say during the thing is it might need engineering support for, for the fix. So that is something we can do under chapter ninety, but again, you, you saw the pot of money, so, um. Everything is worth doing, but we, we can't do everything. Okay, uh, we've talked already about this, uh, clump of roads, Nathan Lane, Monroe Hill and Virginia Farm Lane. So here are the PCI scores, Nathan is sixty eight, Monroe is sixty six, Virginia Farm Lane is seventy four and there are, I've visited this myself, there are significant. Significant pothole issues on this road and, um. It's not on any current paving plans, so the two year plan or the consulted plan currently. River Road, a couple complaints about River to Noel Farm, um, stating this is dangerous for bikers and walkers and for, um, for cars. So it's a PCI fifty seven and it will be paved this year. She's, I like saying that, because that's good news, Keel Road. Especially at the intersection of Acton Street, so this is a paved and repaired, this is a fifty one. And it's on the consulting plan for twenty twenty six, as Mr. Yip already mentioned. Okay, we talked about, no, we didn't talk about this, so another. Problem from paving that can result is runoff and other drainage issues when you're, when you're paving roads and addressing it. So on one eighty three, this, or from one eighty three, not that one eighty three, so down from one eighty three, we have cascading water that overtops the berm there. Uh, the catch basins need to be adjusted, the residents there would like to add signs that say it's a steep curve, it's a big curve. And then, um, this particular section is a forty seven, which is pretty low on the PCI scale. It's not currently on any paving plan and it might need some engineering support to, um, to make sure that we're addressing the drainage correctly. Okay, Proctor Road, there is a reverse fork, which I know the select words discussed before that we're addressing in the twenty twenty four paving plan. There was a comment from the community to close that road instead of paving it and use that money elsewhere. We would need. Uh, direction from the board on that. Uh, we also aren't sure the, the liability from closing the road.
Uh, Proctor Road is the one that goes into Chelmsford. Size of the triangle are bad, but.
Driven on that.
Yeah, but the sidelines are also bad, because it's, you know, that was designed for wagons and horses who didn't make ninety degree turns. And could hear the clip flop coming. Personally, I'm all for closing that fork, making it a T intersection.
We had a comment, um, to fix potholes better, I'm summarizing that.
Yeah, yeah.
In a, I don't mean it anyway, except the way I've said it and we, we are always looking for training opportunities, we, we do have some newer staff. So we're, we're gonna invest in how to properly address potholes and make sure the, the patches that we're talking about, which are moderately successful. Are being done the best way possible. Uh, that's a commitment of Jim and mine, Cross Street. To, um, just a request here to address the road edges, which, which can be bad on some of these roads. And the drain at Cross in two twenty five, the, we did repair this basin cover in twenty twenty three, so we'll look at it again this summer to make sure it's functioning properly. This road has a PCI of seventy one and it's not on any, any paving plans that we have currently. Uh, we heard from Berry Corner tonight, again, not on any paving plan and it's a PC, PCI fifty four. So Mary talked about. Okay, some general comments, uh, we need better pothole management for, for bikers and bikes, we had a couple of those. Um, Healed Road asked that all utilities be put underground for, uh, tree maintenance and, and electricity purposes. Uh, some tree management is required on, on Healed Road, that's a comment we received. And then, um, we already talked about this one, Judy Farm, uh, water and ice from the storm drain there. Couple requests for road mowing, that's gonna begin on July eighth, it's a two week process and then we'll address most concerns in town for sightlines and others. That's a, always a battle between the growth season and, um, and safety. So July is about the right time for it to not grow back for the, for the winter months. And then a couple just general comments, Pheasant Hill Lane, uh, which we heard from tonight, would like their top coat. We're looking into that, seeing what happened with that, it does look like the top coat was never done, so I can confirm that. And then the guardrails, again, a few areas in town where these are down and broken. And we need some type of long term fix, so. Uh, I'll send this to the board or anybody that wants it, but some key links in here, the GIS you've seen me using tonight is available on the homepage of the website. You can type in any address in Carlisle, it'll bring you to a roadside view. I'll also see the roads and we'll be uploading the layer that was built for this road management plan, so you'll be able to see the colors of those roads. And a layer of road management inside the GIS itself. Eventually, we'll have the paving plans up here as another layer, so you can see what's coming, so the five year plan would show up on the map if you click the right button. And then the twenty twenty four and twenty five road maintenance plan is what's been approved. And then the overall road maintenance plan is the database for all of these discussions.
Couple of questions. Um, you mentioned tree management, how does that fit into this roadway, like, is that a separate thing? The DPW, when they address roads, they also look at the trees and, or is it done by the utility companies?
So it's a combination, so there's a few variables, we, we can't cut. We can't cut stuff outside of our easement or anything that endangers public safety, so some of it is residents to manage. A very small piece of it, the utilities is our primary budget source, they do a lot of tree management in town, but not necessarily when or where we want it. So we have to advocate there, uh, Jim does a good job, Jim's the tree warden in town, so he has that responsibility. And then we have a very small DPW budget for tree maintenance, but we do not have. The expertise in-house to do tree maintenance, so we have to, uh, contract that up.
And is that tree maintenance mostly emergency, tree maintenance, when it comes down, you remove it?
We have enough to address something that, that needs to be addressed immediately, we don't have enough for, for long term preventative maintenance. And it's not an excuse, but Carlisle is a particularly difficult type of community to do tree maintenance because of the number of trees. It's very expensive here and it's also very beautiful because of that.
Yeah, you also mentioned signs, there was a comment about putting up signs, so there are curve, you know, on, I think it was the Indian Farm. Indian Hill, um, and do, do we have a, are, have we established this yet? We talked about the safety committee being, um, installed to do signage and to, to be the, the kind of board that really oversees. What types of signs will be, you know, there's a need for it, is that in, in process or what is the sign?
We just, we haven't had the volunteerism that we'd hoped for for that. But we have a lot of people. Who seem to be interested in road maintenance and safety, it's really exciting, so if everybody wants to volunteer, we can work.
You're, you're interested.
Road maintenance.
We need people, pathways, walk, walkways.
It's a good way to lobby.
Yeah, right, you get to have your fingers in a lot of things.
So as you can see, we get a lot of comments, like, we, we'd like a sign here, we would like you to paint this and, uh, the select board has. The time, but not always the expertise or vice versa to address each one of these issues, so the, this committee is supposed to be something to vet these issues and bring recommendations to the select board. So very important board, I actually think it's interesting work and we're looking to volunteers.
We are close, but we have eight thirty is our timing for, uh. The idea behind this.
Yeah, what is the code, is it in the?
Do you know that?
Alright, so, um.
Where do we go from here?
Right, so I've talked to the. Long term capital planning, so one of the holes in our capital plan is horizontal construction, so culverts, guardrails, roads. So roads is, just this paving part of roads is one piece, but also preventative maintenance, line painting, all the things that go into it. So the, the DPW isn't up in their budget to address emergency issues, they don't, they don't have enough in their direct budget to. To do the type of maintenance that would allow the long term prevention of these problems. And then, of course, we have the backlog as, as Ben discussed tonight, so the ability to address all of these issues. Nor would you wanna do it all at once, because then you're creating a ten year problem, where you have to address it again in ten years. So where are we going with this? With the limited resources we have and the idea that. For most communities, the focus is on those roads that are heavily traveled, that you can fix for the greatest amount of people, there, there is a parity problem in town. In terms of the smaller local roads, so how much to invest in the capital plan and where is a discussion that the, I think belongs at the. Capital planning in the finance committee, how much can we afford long term and how much extra are we gonna add to the plan in order to? To address some of these problems and then we'll need input from the select board and the finance committee on where, where to invest that. So Jim and I are always gonna give you the biggest bang for your buck, so are the consultants, uh, but we know that. As Berry, Berry Corner, right, like it's, it's true, it's, it's a dead end, it's difficult to get to. In terms of paving, it would be cheap if you could pick it up in, in some plan, uh, cheaper, not cheaper, yeah. But when and how to do that, because it's not the only fifty two in town, there's probably a couple dozen that aren't here.
Part of the problem also is, it's not the entirety of Berry, Berry. Corner Lane, it's only that little end piece, um. So. There, there's lots of parts of town where it's not the whole thing, it's just like this section here. How do you envision the process then moving forward as far as a process to establish that plan?
It should start with a base recommendation, which we've got, so the consultants have given you a recommendation, we will give you a recommendation on top of that. What we've gathered for, but then it has to be an annual discussion of what else, what do you add to it? And I think sessions like this, at least put roads on plans for people, so they have some hope for three, four years, two years. Otherwise, you're just, you know, when is it ever gonna be addressed? And, um. It has to be fit into the conversation of building maintenance and. New buildings and then vehicles and other, and other capital, so. Most people experience their government through their road, it is the primary complaint we get, but we also know that we can't make the roads all ninety nine, a hundred in town, so. It's policy question, how much?
Right, so we talked about it before, the last time we, we initially talked about the roads and we decided. That we sort of voted on, but we at least had a discussion that we aren't funding enough right now. To kind of maintain the roads as the condition that they're in currently, we historically, so we're going to need to spend more money. You would have lived through that beginning, um, so if the finance committee gets on board and we are able to, you know. Raise an additional amount, what we think is reasonable to maintain at a certain level that we think is appropriate for Carlisle. Then it's just becomes an exercise of which roads first and is that what you're looking? You're gonna present a recommendation to us of an annual plan and then have us vote on or you talk about it and then vote on it? Or what, what, what do you think, or maybe I should ask the board, like, what, what do we think it's appropriate? Unless you have already have a, a thought about that.
Our current directive is create a five year plan. But this data and the input you're getting is gonna have to adjust that plan manually. And then you're gonna have to find a filtering mechanism for, you know, it's a good thing, once a road knows that if they complain, like, they might get on the thing. You'll get a lot of input, but then you're gonna get a lot of input, so.
Yeah, that, I, I, it seems to me so, we should have some, so, you know, obviously we have this in all these numbers, which is a more objective criteria. But I think we also have to, obviously, there's some prioritization, so obviously, the true roads, collector roads. And then local roads, in that order get prioritized and then of the, of the local roads.
Of the local roads. It, you know, we have to decide whether are we going to do the best ones first? Or the worst ones first, or you know, some sort of combination, or some combination, because. I think there might be a lot of frustration among people get that if they're on the worst. If they see the better ones getting attended to before theirs. But they're getting attended to because. They, they're less expensive at the steps uh, to do at the level that they're at. And they will then last for a longer time than to go for the really bad ones. Because that's going to be like almost a re, you know, whole. So maybe, you know, like we could do at least some commitment to one, one forty, you know, level forty a year. Local road so that at least some of those really, really bad ones start to get addressed. I think for the red ones. Uh, it seems to me that that would be helpful, but.
I think it would be helpful to understand the economics of that, because you suggested one, but it may be, I mean, it's like, how much dollar amount can we spend and then what?
That's right. And, and that's what I'm saying. You get a lot more length of, of, of a level sixty road fixing it than. Because it's. It might be because we top it and forty might be you have to really totally get up totally dig it up and start all over again. So it's a much more expensive proposition, but it seems to me that we still need to balance that every, because of the frustration that would. You know, so that.
Yeah.
Try to mitigate some of that frustration.
Ryan, when you need a decision from the board? Like, how do you, timing wise? So we've got twenty-five in place. Is that right? So it's really for next year for, for the following, you're talking fiscal twenty-five or?
So the growth plan is a calendar year twenty-four, twenty-five. But it runs into fiscal twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six. But that doesn't matter. So there is additional money for paving. But if you want to do. You could spend it all this year, but then you won't have enough to do the five hundred plan for the next year. So. If you want adjustments annually or you want to address roads, you, you could. But I imagine the board would want a more holistic view and plan. So I think the. The capital planning should be done in the fall. And then the board should again review that. Data and the stuff they've seen and then decide if they want to adjust next year in the year forward and funding levels as we compare it to other priorities. But in the fall, you're also going to have the fire station discussion. The police station will be coming online and then. Just a quick review of Highland, the Boghouse, um, community, the community building, right? So all the other discussions that are going to compete.
Yes. And as you said, you know, this is the connector for everything or the roadway. So, and, and it's the thing that you get the most calls on. Potentially. So, I mean, this is important and I, I like this. I mean, I think it's good to have the public input and, you know, as long as we have a fair. Kind of process in place.
It does, it sounds to me though, that we have state money for paving, which can only be used for paving. Cannot be used for the police station or the fire station. Right. So if we have excess funds of that this year. What's the point of holding on to it until next year? If we have a plan, I mean, I can see you don't want to further it away. Spend it willy-nilly, but as long as you're moving forward on your plan, why not accelerate your plan?
So this summer we procured it and it's set.
Yeah.
But that's. Reasonable question for next summer, but the, the answer is, we always want a little in reserve in case you have a western. Street culvert.
Yeah. Proltopus street culvert, which is also second. Yeah.
Yeah. Um, but it doesn't mean that you want to board it all. So you're not fixing problems.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. That's. Which is what we've had in the past.
Okay, well, then let's, uh, uh, our next year's plan was, yeah, was planned to. Unless, I mean, is that kind of the sentiment of the board that we'd rather, you know, do a little bit more from a planning standpoint to. Do additional. I guess I want to see the numbers. The whole thing, but.
Yeah.
You know, but not board it, but, but have a reserve and.
Yeah.
It's going to come down to the numbers. So let's just.
This is why I showed you the.
Yes, yes.
Just quickly.
I know we're running over for our finance committee here.
So.
But this is finance related.
This is why. This is why, this is why, if you commit to five hundred thousand a year, and this very conservative numbers here, the state should increase funding at some point, but it's not guaranteed. Then you will be in a. One point two million dollar deficit in FY thirty-four, two-year paving plan, which means you're going to eat into capital. Means you need to generate more from cash. You're just going to squeeze your operating budget and. Drive up the cost for your buildings. So that's why. You wouldn't spend it all in one year. But that also doesn't get anything done. So I, I feel like the middle road is stronger road.
That, I guess that's where I'm advocating everything. Of all of this, but I would, I would see what we could hit a leg up, you know.
Well, it looks like he's doing that. It was seven eighty-two and five thirty-two year, spending a little bit more.
Yes, but to keep that level up, you're going to have to.
You're going to have to get more funding.
Or. Agitate politically at the state level.
Yeah.
This is why I keep saying to you. Uh, local aid, great. Other state initiatives, great. Chapter ninety for Carlisle is the number one. Driver of reducing taxes. It's the dollar for dollar we get on chapter ninety. Feeds down into not using operating dollars and not using capital dollars for roads, which means you can use it for other items. So if I was advocating for anything, and I do for the town, it is for chapter ninety and road money.
Yeah, the other thing we could be advocating is for municipal buildings assistance at the state.
Also, just as good, because then you could take that money and put it in the votes.
Alright, we are a little beyond our time. Sorry about that. Um, we wanted to talk about the end of the year transfers, which is a joint meeting with finance committee. So if you wanted to come forward. That'd be great. More armor.
Bring up another chair. Thank you, everybody who attended this meeting.
Yeah, thank you.
Lack of better word.
Yeah.
Do you want to open your meeting?
I shall. I'd like to call the meeting to order for the finance committee. If we can take a roll call, please, of those on the phone.
Movement here.
Uh, Delia's here.
Victor, we can't hear you.
Got you here.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you. The thirty-first. Call me on the thirty-first.
Next Tuesday for falls on a Thursday.
Uh, so I think Kelly, you were going to review the year transfers.
Yes, yes. So this is the lovely time of year where everything starts to wrap up. Uh, budget-wise, so FY twenty-four is coming to a close. Um, so with that, we've seen some. Changes in need amongst departments. So many of these, I think, have been communicated throughout the year as changes were made. So much of this shouldn't be too much of a surprise. Um, so the way this is structured, does any increases to a budget line are positive numbers? Any decreases to a budget line are negative numbers. So those negatives fund the positives. Um, so this column net zero. Um, kind of a summary of what's in here. One of the, go over the heavier changes first. So in the DPW, you're going to see a positive thirty and a negative thirty coming out of the transfer station. That really is just a. A fuel change. So historically, they had budgeted thirty thousand dollars in the transfer station budget for unleaded and diesel fuel. And another portion right out of the DPW budget. It was kind of use the DPW first. When that runs out, ship to the transfer station. So instead of doing that, we've. Floated all consistently through the DPW and that's how it's budgeted for in FY twenty-five. Um, so it makes reporting simpler and it kind of follows the methodology of what's, what's changing for next year. Um, the vocational school, this was the additional student that moved to Carlisle. So this is the addition. Most of the semester cost um, to add at that one student. Insurances, do the increase for additions to whether it was a new hired, coming onto the plan or. Um, unexpected changes in, in those that joined. Um. Inspection services, that was part of our reorganization plan. So you'll see between the treasurer's line, the inspection services line, the accounting line. Thinking there was one more. Sustainability, thank you. Um, that was kind of the reorganization of the finance team. The land use team bringing Sarah on as the sustainability and land use coordinator out of the building department. Um, that changed the, the wage need in all of those buckets. Um, so that accounts for all that change. Uh. Police department. We had an unexpected large buyout um, at the end of this fiscal year. So that'll cover a significant portion of that. Uh, planning, that was some additional hours for Julie's position. Uh, again, accounting partially was due to the reorganization, but also. Um, we did a cutoff audit. So MGL requires that we do a collector cutoff audit if the collector position changes. Um, so that covered, the audit is part of the town accountant line, so that increased to cover that cost. Um. And anything, anything else that's saying that I didn't specifically mention isn't anticipated to come in under to help cover these overages.
We, we're now, that all that comes up to zero.
It does. I, I checked it and Nancy checked it three times.
I needed to be sure.
I do.
Well, unless there are any other questions.
I have a quick question if I can ask. On the insurance, um, that isn't due to any kind of an increase of the premium on salaries, just. All the changes that went on with people coming on and. Yes. Thanks.
Next year is one that.
Then it's both.
These comes up, yeah.
It's both, yeah. That's basically for me. You guys have any questions?
Also, anyone online? Forward.
I'm good.
Okay. Great, sir.
I move that the select board vote pursuant to master in the law, chapter forty-four, section thirty-three B. To approve year-end transfers between various line items of the fiscal year twenty twenty-four budget. As detailed in the memo from the town accountant dated June twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-four. Second.
Need further discussion? Have you noticed that Scott is longer with us? Okay, well, we still have a court. We do have a court. Okay, um, seeing none, take a roll call or actually, we don't need to take a roll call, but we can do it anyway.
Arnold, I.
Snell, I. Okay.
And then does Vincom also vote?
Yes.
Yeah.
Of course, I don't have the, the fancy writing sheet as. Can I read it?
Oh, I see.
So smart.
Yeah, really. Just because I'm looking laptop. Um, so I moved at this, at the select board. I moved at the finance committee vote pursuant to. MGL, chapter forty-four, section thirty-three B, to approve year-end transfers between various line items and get fiscal year twenty twenty-four budget. Is detailed in memo from the town accountant dated June twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-four. Can I have a motion to approve?
Second.
And roll call please.
Delia.
Lumen, I.
Yang, I.
Lipinski, I. unanimous.
Great.
Thank you. Actually, I'll have you.
What?
Does it bring anyone?
Kelly brought them in.
That I can book it tomorrow.
You don't need to reserve one transfer.
That's it. That's your last option.
Thank you. Um, so I guess we will move to adjourn the finance committee meeting. Do I have, do I have somebody?
Have we adjourned?
I'm second.
One second. Could I have a roll call on the phone, please, for adjournment?
Well, it doesn't just go in order.
Yeah, go ahead. Go in order.
Starts with Mark. Delia.
Lumen, I.
Yang, I.
Lipinski, I.
Lynn, we gotta have a party for you. So you can't escape.
Thanks.
I'm going to call you and, and we'll arrange something. So.
Okay, alright. I'll be there. Thanks again.
Take care.
Thank you.
Thanks for hanging around for policy. Can't get ready.
Alright, well, we're back on. We'll move into our financial policies. Employee reimbursement and credit card policy.
Right, I'm going to go ahead and move to approve the employee expense reimbursement policy and procedures and the credit card purchase policy as. Presented in our packet.
Second.
Okay, so let's have a discussion on that. Is there? Anything that you wanted to bring to our attention besides the works in the back?
The, the primary discussion that the, the PIN team had and then the PIN bomb had was uh, employee reimbursement. So the. The questions of um, costs for, for reimbursement for meals at, at conferences and like what's fair? How to calculate mileage and all those recommendations are, are in. So what do I mean by calculate? Just how detailed we got. Should mileage count from home of record to where you're going and back, or should it come from? From work to the place you're going and back in a survey or of other towns and best practices, it's done both ways. So. It was really just what, what worked for Carlisle. I actually don't remember what we settled on.
We picked up from work at, uh, to the, uh, venue.
Yeah.
And that, and any difference if you went directly from home, uh, if the mileage would still be calculated. From. Town hall to the thing and you would have to. You know, the difference.
And I get interrupted. Um, so on the, on the second page, it says page sixty-four, but it's really the second page of the same. Policy in part A under business mileage. I think it incorporates, at least the printout I have incorporated to. Says travel must be listed from the town offices, not from the person's home. But then the next sentence says. If they're traveling from their home to an outside business location, only the mileage occurred more than their normal commute is reimbursable. I think we struck that.
Oh. No, I think that's exactly what you meant.
You wanted it to only be beyond what the normal commute was, or just take it from the town office to where they were going.
So. Yes, but. But we didn't require them to come to the town office to do that. So they will only get it.
They would only get what's outside.
Outside of their normal.
Okay, I understand that, right? So you're deducting, you're saying if you normally commute to work, you have to deduct that.
Yeah.
When what is the travel you do.
Which seems.
Reasonable and fair.
Yeah. So if you lived in Boston and you normally come to work. And, but your meeting is in, you know, the Heinz Convention Center. You would actually make out like a bandit. No, actually. Right, right. Just get from your home, home.
You wouldn't get anything.
Well, no.
If you live in Boston, went to Heinz, it's less your commute.
Right, wait, that's true.
For reimbursement.
That's true.
And that's right. I think I was thinking we often identify the. More place of worth to location and sometimes you make out, sometimes you wouldn't.
Yeah.
That was the simplicity of what we opted for instead of having to do that, that double calculation.
Yeah.
That was my.
Is that why you think we didn't have this, that, other?
That's why I think that sentence may have needed to come out. Because it, it is, it is doing that, you know, calculation of your normal commute and then you don't like anything beyond that. But like your example, if you're going two miles down the road, your normal commute's ten, you would get any reimbursement for that. I, I'm fine either way. I just.
Yeah.
But you're saying the third sentence, if the person is traveling from home, that's the one you would delete?
Yeah, if we're opting to only do from place of work to the location they're traveling to.
I thought that sentence was trying to say, you're not required to come to work. Before you go, it, but we'll only reimburse you for that mileage. That's what that, I think that was what we were trying to say. You know what I'm saying?
That's, we talked about that.
Yeah.
If I can interject. You're talking about this. That was the premise that it's from the work. Talking about this, that was the premise, that it's from the work to the location, that's the mileage.
But if you were to leave from home, you're not going to get the mileage from home to the location. So you might make out better, actually, because it might be further from the location. So if you did live in Boston and you're going to Heinz.
That's interesting, that's a different interpretation than I thought, yeah.
But I guess what, what was your intent, what did you want it to do?
Make it clear.
Like clearly, clearly, it's what we had discussed, I mean. Exactly what she said, and I think you were there too, right, Brian? Do you remember we said from the place of work? To wherever you're going to, that's what you'd get reimbursed for, even if you're not. Even if you're leaving from your house, it's from your place of work. That's the starting point, because, because we talked about just being a, just easier to measure, because otherwise, think about it. It's just, it's just a pain in the neck to, you know, so where do you live, where do you live?
Yeah, you have to.
It just makes sense to go. And that was the intent when the finance committee discussed it, anyway, that was what we had recommended.
So you would take this sentence out then, because this said. Only the mileage incurred more than their normal commute to town office is reimbursable. But we're not saying that, you're saying they're gonna get the reimbursement or the distance to town hall to the destination. Where the miles of where they started.
Well, the thing is, I, actually, that. Well, that, for instance, if you lived in, well, Tewksbury, let's say, and you're going to Heinz. Um, and you were gonna go from Tewksbury to here first, you don't get.
Right, no, I understand that.
We'd subtract that part, so if that, that sentence is for when you're going further than from work. It's not for when you're going closer than from work.
Right, right.
So I, I'm not sure you need to take it out, but it.
I guess the way I read it, if a person is traveling from their home to an outside business location, only the mileage incurred more than their normal commute. To the town office is reimbursable, that's saying if I go from here to New Jersey, you know. I would have to net out my normal daily commute before putting in for reimbursement. So it's shrinking by reimbursement by what I would normally commute in that day, not necessarily that I didn't go to the office first and then go. I don't know, I read that differently, I think. If we're saying ta- town office or place of work to wherever the location is, I think we should take that sentence.
Yes, okay, depends on what you want, how you want to measure it.
I've seen, like, like Brian said, I've seen it a lot of different ways, um. But yeah, netting off your commute essentially is saying, I go to work every day, I shouldn't get reimbursed for my normal daily drive. Even if I'm going somewhere else, uh but it, it does make it more complex.
But that's what you wanted it to.
We settled on just, just it's from.
Okay, so why don't we um make, let me amend the uh. To approve the employee expense reimbursement policy as amended tonight by striking that sentence.
So you need to, yeah, um, I will second that amendment.
Okay, any further discussion that settled with?
The credit card purchase was much more simple, first of all, there's only.
Or anything else? Bring up this, this is all, this is what you wanted.
When do you want this one impacted?
You can do an hour, July one, we're close to July one.
Is that gonna change Mr. Warren, mid-warrant?
So what's, the date says May twenty twenty-four.
The reason I'm asking is if people are submitting their vouchers now, and there's a new policy, then we just, we'd have to change it all.
Yeah, no, no, let's, let's do it next.
Okay.
Are we? Voting on both of these policies together?
Well, I made the, I originally made the thing.
Together, I just had a quick question about the credit card policy. It's just, I just wanna see if I understand it correctly, that so, what it's saying is that only the superintendent and the town administrator. Are gonna have a credit card, a town credit card, but it looks like. A staff member may uh fill out a form to use the credit card and that has to be approved. By either the superintendent or the TA, and that, that can happen, did I understand that correctly? Okay.
Two cardholders, if they want, if an employee needs to borrow their credit card for a purchase, there would be like, it's essentially a sign-out sheet. That shows that they have the budget to be able to. Absorb whatever they're going to charge, they have approval to charge up to a certain amount for a specific purpose and that the card be returned.
Okay, great.
If you travel and you have employees that go to a conference or something, how is it usually done? Do they just reimburse with they use their own private card and reverse?
It depends. Combination of both, could be on the town credit card, could be on a personal credit card.
So you made the motion, you had it amended with the taking striking line out, and it's gonna be effective July first, two thousand twenty-four. So we'll do a roll call vote.
Arnold, I.
Rita.
Snell, I.
Great, thank you.
Change, you know, if we find that we made a mistake.
Thanks, Kelly. All right, here comes the big.
We're running out of time. All right. You wanna start with the interim town clerk? Or this question?
Ready for both. Okay, the board will remember, uh, is Aubrey here, Aubrey here, she's gonna get us.
I'm listening, I'm just getting some water.
Sure, so um, as you know, uh Gretchen and I uh have done a search for an interim town clerk, we had some interviews. Um, our top candidate is James Mullin, he was the Milton Town Clerk for decades. Um, since then, he has um helped in many towns um since about, I think, when he retired in twenty twelve, I believe. Um, so he is well-equipped to, to yeah, come in and help as needed. Um, he's uh, one of his strengths is elections, which is perfect timing. Um, and we also reached out to, for references and only got uh stellar reviews. So uh I do, I would like to ask the select board for um approval to. Um, pay sixty-five dollars an hour is his request um to work for us, it'll be three days a week. Six hours each day, so that's eighteen hours a week, so we still would be budget neutral. Um, for that time, it would be until December um to carry us through the elections. So I am asking for the board um for that approval, um, in order to appoint him.
So, do, can we get some context?
Yeah, if you remember, the, the board delegated this to, to us, we delegated it to Aubrey and Gretchen, they did a great job on the search, so. Wait, in the, in the search process, they found that. It, it would be unlikely to hire someone permanently prior to this election, just because of previous commitments to other towns or et cetera, so pushing this past. The election was extremely important. If that's the case, then we need someone who's very strong in elections, which you heard Aubrey say that, that they vetted that very strongly, so this is. If not the best, one of the best uh interim town clerk. Clerks we can get to make sure that this election runs well, which is one of our primary concerns. Uh, this pay is si- is significantly higher than, than what this is authorized, um. For, for the town clerk position, as, as was stated in the elected official part of the warrant, and it's done every year with the finance committee. We think that's warranted, um, we thought, we thought sixty was a stretch for us to pay. The candidate uh asked for sixty-five, so. We were gonna bring sixty to you without, without asking you, but sixty-five is, is a little bit higher, so we wanted to make sure that you were comfortable with that before we paid it. Um, Aubrey did a great job calculating this and working with the staff, so this is budget neutral, but we are, we are paying a premium to have one of the best interns come in and, and help us in this.
I think we ended up doing the same thing when we had the interim TA.
I think we did.
Had to pay more.
And, and what is the length of this? Is it a set kind of timing, or is that?
Sorry, seeing you ask that again, it was hard to hear.
Sorry, just the timing of the appointment here, the interim, the interim would be from, if we approved it tonight, it would start.
Would start uh this, I'll say, I would, it would be Monday, the eighth.
And, and go through when, and to.
Until the end of November, beginning December, so it'll be going through the, both the elections and the special town meeting.
Okay, but one of the concerns that was, that Ryan mentioned, that, that the interim, it's hard to. To get a new town clerk because of the election, because.
Sure, so what it was is that um if we had done an interim and, and a kind of an interim basis where it's just carrying us through the summer. That would have negated any candidates that wouldn't have wanted to leave just before the elections. From wherever town they're coming from, so by also, so there is that issue. With interviewing during the elections, but um, but that would also allow, you know, a top candidate to finish the elections whenever town they're in. And, you know, finalize anything, finalize anything if they have any special town meetings as well, so that when they do start um in Carlisle. That they have finished in their town appropriately as well.
We think it's enough, you do.
Okay. All right.
Aubrey, just a quick question, I noticed in looking at the um. I guess his letter of interest, that he lives in Foxborough.
Oh, yeah.
And that's a really long commute.
If you look at other towns he's worked in since then, at Lancaster and everything, it, it seems that he's fine with that commute. You know, he came in person to the interview, so he's well aware of what that would look like, so.
Big podcast guy.
Yeah, well, it's also part time, it's not like he's coming every day. Three days.
As Aubrey stated, he's done this half a dozen times, so. We're very confident he knows what he's getting.
And he trains other people and helps as well, so.
That would be very helpful.
Just one more feather in the cap to, to Penny, he, he did say that he's, he's normally walking into worse situations, so. This, the situation, despite its emergency nature because of what happened, like, he feels pretty good that he can step right in and. And just manage to ship rather than fix it.
Good.
Great.
So you need a motion for us to um. Approve the pay for James Mullin, or no?
Uh, just to appoint.
A motion to support the appointment?
Of the interim.
Of the interim.
Unless you feel like you delegated that and I can hire, if you wanna vote to appoint.
I think we should vote, I do think it's important.
Okay, so move that we um appoint James Mullin as the interim town clerk.
Any subject twos, we don't have any. Did, did they do a background check or not?
We will get that.
I don't know that really, where's necessary, just, you know, it's like, either we delegate or we don't, and then something.
I think it's good, though, we're, we're involved in the process, we're just giving him support that they're.
Well, we could give him a sense of the community without.
So you don't want a second?
Yeah, I guess I don't. I, well. You know, it's like, we need to fish for cut bait, either we delegate or we don't delegate, I think we delegated this. And he's bringing us a recommendation, he's coming back only because of the salary, if you wanna, you know. Do a, a vote about, you know, authorizing sixty-five dollars an hour, that, that's a different, maybe different story, but. I think it's. Up to Ryan to make the appointment.
I agree with that, okay.
Well, you've at least got the sentiment that, I'll tell you, I support the interim, so. That's, uh, your appointment, so.
We got a really good, really good candidate, um Aubrey and Gretchen did a great job finding us a candidate while I was gone, um. The region really supported us, as I stated before, the volunteers really helped step in. And um I can't emphasize enough how much this added to Gretchen's plate while she's been serving as the temporary town clerk. Um, I won't say she didn't complain at all, but she complained very little. Um, she's, she's done a great job. And then, of course, Aubrey's taken on some of her responsibilities to say. Team effort and uh. Shows our, our resilience and our redundancy, which is good.
All right, let's move on to these.
Another big job that uh do we have Gretchen did.
You start with those uh couple of resignations.
So we're notifying the board of a couple resignations we received, effective. Uh, July first, it should be twenty twenty-four, Christian Semenator. Has uh resigned his position as a public safety dispatcher and special police officer, which is the title for a part-time officer, so he got another position. He served in the town for more than a decade, he's um one of the best dispatchers in the area, he's done a great job for us. He uh was hoping for, it was at one point, would he be able to join the, the police force, et cetera? He, he found what is his passion is a, is a full-time position, so we're very, very sad to leave him, but very excited for, for his future, um, doing what he wants to do. So, thank you to Christian, he will serve through, through the, the first of July, which helps us with holiday scheduling, so again. It sounds pejorative, but it was nice of him to uh extend his time through the holidays, so we didn't have to uh force people to work, et cetera. So that was, that was good and professional, I think. Also, effective uh June eighteenth, twenty twenty-four, Chip Duing. Has resigned from his associate member position on the store commission. So the two notifications, all right, for the community appointments, um, there's a lot of data in the summary sheets. I, I can walk through each sheet with you. Or you can move the whole slate or some combination of, but what this, the, essentially, the summary sheets are doing. Is what the board asked for, which is. Very specific, what is the current membership, what is the membership going to be, so anyone in. Old is, is new. Uh, with their new terms listed in the incumbents or the people that were already serving are listed with asterisks, and it's done for every committee that has an appointment.
Great, can, I, I'm happy to do one motion all the way through, but I'd like to kind of go through each one. And then maybe do a, an entire motion, just to see if there's anything, any kind of questions that come up.
Yeah, I, I have one question.
All right, so why don't you mind going through, Ryan, quickly?
Okay, so the, the ag commission?
Yeah, yeah.
I'll just state it, if there's any questions or concerns, then I'll move on. There's a lot of data behind it.
We, we need to find some new people, because we still have two vacancies.
And now you're gonna scroll a long way here, there were a lot of sheets.
Okay, the Affordable Housing Trust.
Okay.
Oh, yes, I wanna point out that uh there are three vacancies, one of which is the select board member, I'm just gonna leave that there. Until we get to the liaison, we'll, we'll have that discussion in the next meeting, yeah.
Okay, but uh, it's, other than the select board rep. The slate, th- there's no approval for this, the rest of the group, right? No approval needed?
Well, because we have a bunch of vacancies and nobody, we have nobody new to fill in, in the slots.
Yes, nothing new.
There's nothing.
Okay, so nothing needs to be voted on here, okay.
But do, it looks like she has a motion on each one, but we can do a general.
Well, that's no longer. Scott's not here, but we're gonna handle it through the board now, because Scott and me and Sean, so.
Yeah, we voted to have that go through the board, so that can be taken off, yeah.
Okay, there's nothing on the board of registers, uh, the town clerk is a member of the board register, so this will have to be rectified, and there is a vacancy for. Any apartment, any party or unenrolled, so this is a.
Yeah.
This one does have uh politics attached to it.
Um, but you can't have more than two of one party, as I recall, so um it would have to either be a Republican or um thing unenrolled.
I don't have to check, because.
Pretty sure it's.
No, there's two Democrats and one Republican.
It says there can be no more than two members in each major political party.
That's right.
Well, well, we we don't have more than two.
More than two. I understand, but.
Town clerk won't count anymore because in this instance for right now, because they're not a resident.
Ah, because they're not a resident, so so but that still means that we're looking for either an enrolled or a Republican, because we have two.
No, it could be Democrat or Republican or unenrolled.
Oh, I'm sorry, because Ann is not, I was looking at the top, not the box, sorry. Okay.
All right, veterans and celebrations and veterans, so there's a lot of vacancies here, and there is um an appointment, a couple of appointments that need to happen. Which can be handled in the slate, unless there's any questions.
No, all for those that served before.
Well, why, well, uh so my question was why in the slate are Heidi and Christopher's based on?
Does he want to go, they don't want to continue?
Well, then that should be vacancies.
Doesn't it say that?
No, it says Heidi and Christopher.
So in the twenty twenty five, it says they're vacant, so it moves from twenty four to twenty five.
See the second box?
The twenty five slate, I'm looking at the, I'm looking at the old one, just so I didn't have to look through all the chat, and I didn't realize that that got changed.
Okay, gotcha.
All right.
Was there significance on the yellow on all?
The that, well, that is they're vacant, they, she changed it today, got vacant.
Oh, I see, those are the.
Yeah.
We got three people on the cemetery committee, that's good.
Far.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's great, they're not dying to get in.
Go to your room.
This is a really, really important X type committee, so we're looking for a Tom Balata type.
Yeah.
Not saying that.
Okay.
So these are new appointments.
Oh, yeah, well, that's, well, and that, okay, so the question I had was, do we re, do we appoint these or do their the boards appoint their representatives?
They appoint.
Yeah.
But we have, I think we have.
We have to ratify their appointment.
Yeah.
Okay. All right.
So I actually don't want to speak out of turn, but I think you can deny their recommendation, but then they have to bring another recommendation, and they can bring the same one, so it could be a whole thing.
That's that's not the same.
But um I think.
So you can't put someone on.
I think I need to be, do I need to, I need to be nominated by the select board to ratify the select board, yes.
I I nominate Barney Arnold to be representative of the select board to the CPC.
Okay, but not everybody's here to do that, can we, can we wait on that till the next meeting?
Nobody's waiting for this one. And we really need her to continue for continuing uh continuity.
Right, I'm just asking, is it a problem to have it start next?
No, we're meeting tomorrow night, and we're not gonna meet again before July ninth. Well, something happens that I don't know about.
Okay.
And you know what, that'll also allow.
Um, okay, so we'll do that when we do the all the liaisons, this.
Yeah. It'll also allow the um planning board and the REIT com.
Yeah, I think Barney maybe, but I don't think everyone's here on the select board, and I think it's fair to the other.
And it'll allow the REIT com and planning board to vote who they want, they want their same two people, but they need to make that vote, so.
Okay.
So you.
So we'll hold that out.
Holding what, I was just gonna hold you out, but you want to hold the whole slate?
Well, they can't, we can't, we don't have, if you look at the FY twenty five slate, the planning board needs to vote to reappoint um Addie, and the REIT com needs to vote to reappoint Courtney.
Okay.
So the others are good, if you want to go ahead.
So we can still still make the. Yeah, but you can still do the whole slate, since there's no names in that.
If you vote the whole slate, remove the ones you can't do.
Right, okay.
Okay.
All right. Okay, cons call.
They've got one vacancy.
They are now full, assuming.
No, look at twenty five, um Kate.
Oh, sorry.
Full, yeah.
Okay, yeah, I'm sorry, I should look at that. Okay. Good.
Assuming no questions. As you can see with my scrolling.
Here's some.
One of these is backed up.
Crack is the is the one that I had a um uh suggestion about, which is if you, so Mark Lemire was listed on the current, as a current member representing the Trails Committee. And uh in his letter of interest to continue on the Trails Committee, which is page one seventy two, he indicates that he wants to be on the Trails Committee as well as on crack. I know, I know, but maybe, I don't know, maybe that's vacant, so. Maybe that's vacant, though, because the Trail Committee haven't formally voted him.
So he can want, and again, I mean, this is plays, but he can want that, but the 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 crack has to say yes.
Well, he's.
He can't put himself on it if he's a rep from a different committee.
He represented from the Trails Committee.
He can tell the Trails Committee he wants to do it, and they can nominate.
Yeah, which they haven't done, I'm assuming, okay, all right, so that's fine.
We assume it'll go through, but we don't want to.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, moving on. Not gonna say it again, so there's no giggles. Who thought of that acronym, by the way, that's terrible.
We can call it C RAC, you know, we don't.
Okay, council on agents, two, two pages. Let's see, twenty four into can't show the whole slate.
Yeah, I got it.
And Helen Young got added as an associate, yeah, okay, okay. That's good.
Everybody's gone.
Any questions on?
We haven't had anything contested.
No.
Yeah.
Yeah, cultural council, I'll set. We on ESC or?
Culture Council is good.
Yeah.
Oh, Alan Lewis is an associate. I don't know, okay, they have one vacant.
Yeah.
I'm surprised they don't take one of the associates up.
Well, Alan specifically asked only to be an associate.
Okay, okay.
Um. Right? No, I I read it in his.
Yeah.
In his, in his letter of interest. And um did you all see the note from Eric, I mean, from um Glenn?
By Reed?
Yeah. Yeah, so. Oh, here it is, okay.
Oh, yeah, and then there's those two conditional applicants.
Yeah. Let's talk about that at the end.
Yeah, yeah. Because they apply to a lot of different committees as well, you know, with housing.
ESC is good.
Yeah, except the spellings. Environmental spelling.
Finance committee.
Yay. They still have you guys haven't. I don't anybody yet.
Oh, yeah.
Any questions on finance committee?
No. People with them.
Sorry, we are running a little long for you, Tom, but.
Historical Commission.
Historical Commission.
Oh, oh, planning board representative, yes, okay, that's uh Curtis, Sarah, so I'm assuming, and I thought she, well. I thought they voted Terry Can, but maybe not, because she's chair of planning board now, so. I don't know, we'll see.
Okay.
Lance Stewart.
So there's no motion needed for them.
No, there's no. Lance Stewart's.
Yeah, that's. Yeah, a full group, yeah, they. Okay, no problem. MFC. So do we want to take care of that one as well as?
Yeah.
Um, at at uh it's on time.
Yeah.
Okay.
Why is that?
Well, I'm the appointed lead, actually, I'm on it already, and I've already been elected, so I can't change. Because I'm running for another term, we're, I'm a member, I'm a member, I'm not a liaison, I'm a member.
You're a member, I know.
So that hasn't changed, because I was elected for that term, my term's not up, isn't it?
Well, you were appointed for that term, appointed for the term.
Twenty twenty five.
For one more year.
Yeah.
So that's fine.
So we could go ahead and approve this.
Yeah, I think so. Yeah, because it's not specifically a representative of the select board.
Right, I I will be the representative if you want me to, but we can talk about that.
Yeah, we we would have to change the charter, and we should probably deal deal with that to decide whether we really need it. Yeah, continue with, okay. You know, now that there's the possibility of the umbrella department.
That'll be a whole nother discussion, Kate.
Yes.
Well, all right.
Recreation.
Okay, yeah, they're going to, they're good.
God bless Scott. School committee and rec, that's that's too big a sign.
Yeah, it is. And, okay, and he's re-upping.
Yeah.
Okay.
Super volunteer.
Safety committee, thanks Glenn. Anyone else?
We needed some people tonight for the roadways.
Yeah.
Interested.
Well, maybe they went home and filled out an application.
I'll work on that, see if I can get.
If they would be work here, so I think it would be a good.
Well, yeah, we've got lots of stuff that we have to look at.
Get to.
But are, do we want to go ahead and appoint him?
I, yeah, I'd like to start.
Okay, so we've.
Him and I'll just meet.
Yeah. Okay, then we got Trails.
Trails. They're cool.
Yeah, that was good. Transport Station Action Committee. We've got some vacancies. Four, is Christine Lear, oh, she's going to.
Now Karen Fenech.
Become an associate.
And she went to down to associate?
Yeah, and Karen's going on.
Okay. One thing.
Right.
So we got quite a few vacancies there. Maybe, well, do we need as many on there, well, again, that will, it's a subject for another day, but we could look at that charter. When it was started and we were, we needed a lot of people, I'm wondering if it needs that many people on the committee.
I don't think it does.
So we could.
Yeah.
It's probably because there was a lot of work in the beginning.
Yeah. Yeah, it's getting ready to kind of roll.
Right.
Up, right, so, yeah. Okay.
No change in the youth commission, couple vacancies.
Okay.
CBA. Full board, one vacant associate.
Yep. Those people have all been on that for years.
Yeah, yeah, it's years, years, okay, well, I mean, that's good news and the bad news, but anyway. And then what are they gonna do for um administrative help, I think he's gonna do.
So uh good question, we are uh Julie stepped up, she's taking that on.
Oh.
With the idea that she would analyze it and then give us recommendations for what's needed moving forward, so she'll be doing it for a little bit, and then her and I will talk about what we need to do to properly staff that board.
Okay.
Needs one sample.
Yeah, but and still, there's a lot of writing and.
Oh, I know, it has its litigations to.
It has to be, you know, exacting what they do.
Yeah, whatever, okay.
Yes.
We should, I'll take a motion.
Okay, and I think we want to, though, um it sort of says move to appoint all the FY twenty five public body slates as presented, uh except the um community preservation committee, correct, that's the one we want.
And and the and the uh housing trust.
Okay.
Because there were no, there were no new members for the housing trust on there either.
Well, it's, I think it.
The the two that needed uh refs appointed from our board are the two that we're holding out.
Oh, I see, I see, okay, gotcha, okay, so um I move that we appoint all of the FY twenty five public body slates as presented, uh with the exception of the uh Carlisle Affordable Housing Trust and the um Community Preservation Committee.
Second.
Any discussion done? Take a roll call vote.
Arnold, I.
Rita, I.
Ella, I.
And I want to say um thank you to Gretchen for all the work that she did, putting this together, and she had sent us a spreadsheet, which we all kind of crashed, we're not very kind, but with everything else going on, she went back and did all this and put it all together. Monumental task, I want to thank her very much.
Yeah, I agree.
Very helpful. I agree too, I stirred that, that's a very.
And the way it ended up was very.
Yeah, with all the supporting material, it was, it was big, but uh really helpful, yeah, really worthwhile. Unfortunately, I've gotten the wrong one up here on my screen, but.
All right. Do we, before we did, you had mentioned two topics on that, but I don't think we need to go on to that.
No, let's let's take up the couple of.
The couple.
Yeah, no, no, we'll talk about that later.
Yeah.
Okay.
Great, so thank you, Mr. Balata. Sorry to keep you waiting.
No problem.
So we'll move on now, we're gonna discuss the uh proposed modifications to the DPW trade policy on transport station use by local private haulers.
Correct.
Use yourself in case.
I'm Tom Balata, seventy seven Nathan Lane, Chair of the Transport Station Action Committee. Um, a year ago, you folks adopted the original local haul regulation, and that was a new thing, and at the time uh we set a motion basically that uh in January of each year, the local haulers would report the stickers for the prior year. And so we went ahead to try and do that this year, and our assumption that they actually had done tractor stickers turned out to be false in the case of two of local haulers. So they could not do that because there many of their clients did not have stickers. So Jim and I met, and we talked about it, and we said, okay, this is new, we're going forward. Uh, what we really care about from this one forward is that they have stickers for twenty two twenty, for twenty twenty four. So basically, we're proposing two changes here based on our experience this year. Um, uh, two, one of the haulers did take the requirement seriously, which has been, you know, in there for decades. Two did not, uh, for the the other two haulers, seventy percent of their clients did not have a sticker costing a town about two thousand dollars in loss revenue, probably for the last twenty years. Um, so anyway, um, once this became visible to us, um, a lot of credit to Jim, Jim took the vote by the horns and uh basically notified these two haulers then on a Thursday, that next Tuesday, um, they would not be allowed in the transfer station unless this was cleared up. Gretchen sold fifty stickers that weekend. And uh they did, I I will say, they did respond very quickly to that uh reality. Uh, got the stickers, and for the most part, there's a few lurking things right now, but you know, at this stage, pretty much every sticker that needs to be bought has been bought. Um, looking at that, um, there was a lot of time wasted by both Gretchen and Jim and me on this process, and so the change here is to tell you to do two things. And make it very simple for Gretchen and Jim going forward, uh to get the information they need or a check or basically not a lot of access, I mean, it also is beneficial to the local haulers, because they don't have total. I mean, it also is beneficial to the local haulers, cause they don't have total control over all of their clients, and they may have half a dozen clients, you know, you you get a sticker, but I didn't do it today, I'll do it next week. And we don't wanna be involved in that process. So basically, the idea here is that by January thirty one, everybody's supposed to have a sticker, and so they, you have to inform their clients early January, get a sticker. Um, by February fifty, they need to report to the DPW the list of clients with the sticker numbers. Uh, they have a choice, if they don't have five stickers, they can pay five times the then uh uh standard fee, cause we don't really care if they have a sticker, we care if we get the revenue. In fact, these customers, these clients really don't want a sticker, they're not buying, now they haven't bought for years. So basically, the idea is, February fifteen is clearly done, towns receive all this revenue, either stickers or the the always bought the sticker. And then we're done, we'll probably give them two weeks grace on that, and come March one, they'll be, if that has not been satisfied. They will not be granted access until it is, so it's very, very simple for everybody, beneficial to them, because if they have a couple in transit and cut clients who won't give stickers. They have the option of paying thirty, forty, you know, whatever number it is and and dealing with it, so that's the two changes. And then because we're doing a twenty twenty four regulation, just as a housing matter, we took out the provision for the for the uh tran- transition period in twenty three, which is no longer applicable. And Jim is aware of this, and he actually took the bill by the horns and already has already notified the haulers, this is uh, this is what they have to do, and actually given them a spreadsheet format they have to fill it out with, cause it was a, it's nightmare this year. We got these non alphabetical lists and handwritten, I mean, just. So we'll tell them that.
Okay.
So we'd like to, but actually, we voted this at our last meeting, we like, let's get a perfect effective July one. Impossible.
Any, any comments, questions?
I I I know, I was surprised my hauler asked me for my sticker number, and you asked me for the. Twenty three and not for the twenty four, so I, since they were both in the cards, and here's the twenty three.
Cause you had one.
I had one for both years.
Yes.
And by the way, here's next year's. Yeah.
Open up to the public, too, any kind of questions?
You need to make the transfer station as. Wherever real neutral is possible.
Yeah.
Okay, good, I don't see any questions, so um. You have a motion?
Yes.
Hey.
Oh, yeah, hold on. So i- is there anybody, is there a household in town that? Either doesn't use a a local hauler or. I mean, yes, they're a hundred twenty, there's one, one commercial company, Wind Waste Innovation, who takes it out of town, Orlando.
I used that. Forty resources.
So you can't make everybody my transportation transition. Well, those ones would not, they would need to be, yeah, they would not need it.
Do you also buy a sticker?
Sorry.
Do you also buy a sticker?
No.
No. See, but I still, you know, like today I went, even though I have a hauler, I I just didn't wanna leave my compost in the garage. Uh, had some extras, you know, from the weekend and some Tuesday, I, you know, I have my sticker and I go take my compost in, so. Right, yeah, just, all right, you wanna make a motion?
I move to approve the updated DPW policy for transportation use by local private haulers as presented uh this evening.
Okay. Okay, any discussions? Say amen. Roll call vote.
Arnold, I.
Reed, I. Snell, I.
I just wanna give you folks two quick updates, I think we talked about last time, um, on enforcement, um, that seemed to have taken effect, the solid waste for February, March, April, May is back to normal. Looks like this year we'll see another sixty, eighty ton decrease over last year, and uh it just says we have to keep an eye on enforcement, if if something goes awry, then we gotta, we gotta deal with that. The bad news is this, okay, you're asking, what is this chart, which has cowhide colored yellow and everybody else green and blue? Uh, yellow means you do not have Black Earth, a curbside pickup. Green means that you just got it within the last three or four months, and blue means that you've had it for longer than that. Um, all of our neighbors now have curbside pickup, um, going beyond that, many do. Um, we're now one of a few folks who do not, um, I've had extensive conversations with Black Earth about this and why why that's the case. Um, it has to do with the population density, we have a large amount of land and a small amount of people. Um, our efforts to sign people up were were in my mind a failure, we basically are now at thirty seven, we started at thirty two. Now thirty two is since inception, which goes back to COVID. So since twenty nineteen, um, you know, we've had, we had thirty two signs up until Sustainability Day, picked up five since then, despite three full days at the transfer stations, Sustainability Day at the table. A full, a pretty nice ad, a quarter page ad, and a mosquito, and a letter to the editor, so I did, uh, the the town most similar to us is Littleton. Uh, Littleton started recruiting also back at COVID, um, they attained about seventy pre registers this year and now have fifty seven clients. Littleton has twice our population, we currently have thirty seven pre registers, which should probably translate to twenty five clients, and by the way, the service does not start at fifty pre registers, it starts at fifty clients. Um, now, I I did speak with the CEO of Black Earth, they really are unhappy with this whole. And uh, the, my sense is they will do what they can to begin service here. Unless they, not lose money, but they'll 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 do it if they can break even or or envision they'll break even in a year or so. They showed me a chart of the actual thirty seven signups, unfortunately, it's randomly placed throughout the area of Carlisle, cause they asked them to strip me, you know, you got all these routes. All around us, could we not, you know, extend some of those in the Carlisle economically, and they actually took a detailed look at that, and they said, yeah, we really can't, can't see that just yet. Um, we're gonna run, we're gonna try and do a full page um insert in a mailer somewhere, so we don't have to pay for the whole mailing, but get a machine in there as our next step here. But uh, basically, it's gonna be real tough to get the pre registers, I think we'll eventually do it in another year or so, but it's not gonna be what we were hoping for. The bigger problem, though, is if you look at here, you notice this is Lexington and Waltham, they have thousands of customers, and even Concord has three or four hundred, you know, beyond population thing. And what it has to do with is, a lot of towns are taking this more seriously than Carlisle's, and CSAC believes we have to take a very serious look at that, to give you an example, Lexington and Waltham and Watertown. Are paying for the full bore curbside pickup for two thousand clients each as a private program, two thousand residents each, and and uh DEP is helping with that, I went to a company in a week to talk about that and see if we see what, what, if we're able to bless.
How much are we paying for Black Earth to cover the pickup of the transfer station?
It's about um tw- two hundred fifty dollars a ton, which equates to about fifty dollars a residence, and the curbside we're selling right now is a hundred eighty or a residence.
You know, I used to have them.
Yes.
Side, but then it came to the transfer station, it that, and they killed my curbside, cause they didn't have enough.
Yes.
Riders at that point, and I did the calculation and it doesn't pay me to.
That's right, that's, that's actually right, now, the numbers are important, because I did get a quote for them, if everyone in Carlisle had it, if we had eighteen hundred customers, it's sixty five dollars a year, so it goes down by two thirds if that happens. And what's happening in these other, these other uh, like elections, while they're saying, you know, two thousand clients, sixty five dollars a year, you're talking a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year or something like that, and so they're deciding they need to do it. Um, T S A is, we're not gonna solve this tonight, we're gonna come up with a bunch of options, but we really need to take a much more serious look at that, cause we're falling behind, this is a yellow we deserve.
I would, but it's another reason to increase the transfer station sticker fee, because, as I said. The calculation doesn't pay for me, so if you, and if you. Get enough so that.
Well, for 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 example, for example, even these towns are not going to solve the problem, Littleton getting fifty seven customers, that's not a deal with, you know, five percent of their customers, maybe ten percent of the customer, you're still not gonna get it, the real. Multi hundreds of towns, which we need to get to, um, my sense is that the only way that happens is. Uh, either the state mandates mandates or the weed mandate, a few towns have now mandated it, and for example, just rough numbers. Um, if Carlisle mandated it and would have been in all eighteen hundred households, hundred thirty five K, less twenty five K and tipping fees, you bought a hundred ten K. Fifty dollar increases sticker fee covers that, so, but that's a rough number, okay, I'm not saying we want it mandated, but um, maybe we do, you know, down the road, love to look back. The other option is to do something where you provide it free to to folks, a- and. Yeah, again, you could find it with sixty, whatever, but so it's not required, but it's it's uh, it's free. Um, Hamilton actually has a very interesting situation, they didn't use Black Earth, they actually mandated the wrong thing, they mandated that you have the green bin. Okay, or whatever bin they have. Everybody has a green bin or they won't pick up their trash, hasn't reduced the tonnage at the transfer station one ton, because people just put the empty green bins at the end of the driveway. Which 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 is silly, what, so so what you'd have to do is you, if it's mandated, you have to actually, just like with recyclables, you cannot dispose a lot at the at the transfer station, but anyway. Treat T S A could work on this, but this is from our perspective, you know, bad news, basically, that we were gonna deal with that.
Well, thank you for the update.
Absolutely, that's.
All right, that's great.
Next town.
Yeah, thanks, Tom, good work. Okay. Moving right along.
Okay.
Down here?
The TA report.
We went into the T, we've missed the banner in there. It's another thing.
Oh.
I don't know.
The banner for.
There was. The.
Wasn't somewhere.
So there, the offer.
Oh, what was it?
Yeah.
Do we have to present? But what we didn't have in here was the July ninth draft agenda.
You're right.
You know.
I I noticed that, too.
But we can, I guess, you know.
We'll, we'll. We'll clarify that tomorrow.
Okay.
And no liaison or those people we, um.
No, the only thing. With the banner, you know, it would be helpful is to have what's gonna be on the banner, you you have on your form, you know, but they never have to write what it is, at least the form there, didn't. It just said we wanna put up a banner, but it doesn't, you have no idea what the banner's gonna say, I don't know if that's, if any, if anyone on the board cares about that, I don't know, I don't know if that, you don't care.
Well, assuming that that our administrator is.
I was just wondering, if it's one of the fields that you put into your your form.
Yeah.
You know, having it, I just.
Yeah, like you do when you're putting something up at the rotary or something.
You you tell them what what it's gonna say. Here we can do it.
Yeah.
It's not critical, it's just the comment.
Yeah, the thing that.
Comment. Um. Okay, was there anything else? I thought the road maintenance was excellent, excellent. That's a very helpful, like a good hearing, but now I think we have to work on our path for how we're gonna use all this data and get a.
Right.
You know, a process.
Yeah. Community input?
Yeah, you wanna get out of here, Glenn? Community input, anyone in the community?
Mark?
Online, anyone? This is your chance.
Yeah, one last.
Any questions? Comments, all right.
Okay, I move, uh, we adjourn. Arnold, I.
Yeah.
Reed, I.
Snell, I. All right, adjourned, thank you.